I'd like to call this Johnston County Board of Education September meeting regular session to order. Ms. Jackson, we do have a quorum. We have six board members present. Ms. Sessoms is not with us today. Let's continue to keep her and her family in our thoughts and prayers as she mourns the loss of her husband. At this time, before we go to the invocation, Mr. K Carroll is going to bring the invocation followed by Mr. Albert for the Pledge of Allegiance, but a few families I would like to mention to keep in our thoughts and prayers. The Rick Johnson family, Ronald Johnson and his family, Terri Sessoms and her family, and many other families within Johnston County Public Schools that are mourning the loss of loved ones today. Please keep all of them in your thoughts and prayers. At this time, Mr. K Carroll.
Thank you for the day that you sent our way. We thank you for the blessings thereof. We pray now for those that we have lifted up by name to you, that you would comfort them, that you would be with them, wrap your arms around them and carry them through their difficult times. We love them all and just give them support and know that we do care. For others that we haven't mentioned that are also battling health issues, whether it be COVID, whether it be anything else, we ask that you would be with them, be with their loved ones, that you would guide the physicians in their treatment, that they would get better. Now as we go through this day, we ask that all decisions we make would be for development of our school system. We pray as we are folks are gathered outside that everyone would respect each other's opinions, that we would respect each other, that we would behave like true Americans that we know we are and that we're all about one thing and that's the education of our kids, the safety of our kids and our staff. So we ask that you would be with us today. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Plead the losers to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session for the purpose stated on our agenda.
Admit.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Andrews, second by Mr. Johnson. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries six zero. We'll enter closed session.
Thank you for the day that you sent our way. We thank you for the blessings thereof. We pray now for those that we have lifted up by name to you, that you would comfort them, that you would be with them, wrap your arms around them and carry them through their difficult times. We love them all and just give them support and know that we do care. For others that we haven't mentioned that are also battling health issues, whether it be COVID, whether it be anything else, we ask that you would be with them, be with their loved ones, that you would guide the physicians in their treatment, that they would get better. Now as we go through this day, we ask that all decisions we make would be for development of our school system. We pray as we are folks are gathered outside that everyone would respect each other's opinions, that we would respect each other, that we would behave like true Americans that we know we are and that we're all about one thing and that's the education of our kids, the safety of our kids and our staff. So we ask that you would be with us today. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Like, like to call our Johnston County Board of Education meeting to order. We have already gone through closed session and had our invocation and pledge of allegiance. But I will like to mention again, a few families that we'd like to keep in our thoughts and prayers. The Rick Johnson family, Mr. Ronald Johnson and his family, and Ms. Terri Sessoms and her family, as well as other families within Johnston County Public Schools who are still mourning the loss of loved ones.
Ms. Chairman, in reference to that comment, you know, House Bill 654 was approved that school boards vote on mask mandate each and every month. Based on that, and the impact of that vote and decisions that are made, not only here but across the state, with one of our board members not being here and not having 100% of our members to vote their opinion on the mask. Unfortunately, Ms. Sessoms, with the loss of her husband, can't be here, and I think it needs to be a vote of 100% of our board members. So I ask that we postpone the vote today and soon after, whether it be tomorrow, Thursday, Friday, Monday, whatever. Whenever she's going to take care of her family matters, that we come back to the table and make sure that we vote for the masks.
Leaf services, Friday night is visitation and the funeral is on Saturday. And I truly believe that, out of respect for Ms. Sessoms, we do need to postpone that meeting. Is that the consensus of the board? Okay, while we're talking about that, I know that we have to have 48 hours. Obviously Friday is not, no time this week's going to be good for her, but I'm looking at Monday at 2:00 PM. Next Monday, having a virtual special session meeting, does that work in everybody's calendars? Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir, thank you. Dr. Pierce.
Good evening, Dr. McCaskill. He's the Chief Medical Officer of Johnston Health. We welcome you and Mr. Tommy Williams and any of your other staff, so thank you for joining us.
Good evening, everyone, thanks for having me and thanks for having us. Thanks for letting us talk to you about the situation in the hospital, and how it might impact our most precious resources here in the county, that being our teachers and our students and our children.
Is that okay?
Okay, got it, got it, okay, very good. So I believe, I believe we have some slides. So the purpose, the purpose for us being here tonight is to give you an update on how COVID-19 is impacting our hospitals, that being the campus here in Smithfield and the campus in Clayton. The impact to the hospitals is just going to have a downstream impact on your teachers, kids, and their families. You know, in mid-July, we thought things might be getting better, and they were better for a while. We were down to about four COVID patients in our hospital. None of them were in, none of them were in the ICU. And we thought maybe we were getting to the end of this. I think that was at the point where some of the mask mandates were lifted. But unfortunately, COVID really wasn't done with us. You know, we had this Delta variant that has struck, starting probably the beginning of August or so, and that's had a big impact on the hospital and our community. That, that Delta impact has had a big trickle down into our community as well. It has led to our hospitals being full. What I mean by full is every bed is essentially full of a patient, whether it be a COVID patient or a medical patient. Before COVID, our ICU would typically have two to three intubated patients. When I say intubated, I mean a patient who's on a ventilator or on life support with a tube in their throat. So we've gone from two to three a year and a half ago to as many as 24 in the last month. So that's a tenfold increase in the number of patients that are on life support. So that's a pretty big increase in the number of patients on life support. Here we go. Here are our slides. So, you know, we deemed August awful August because, you know, we had 80, we had 84 COVID patients in the hospital. 22 of those were all ventilators. We had four ICU patients held in the emergency department. What does 84 patients mean? Well, our maximum normal medical census in the hospital is about 150 patients. So over half of our patients were there because of COVID. So that's a big impact. I mean, that's 84 beds that can't be taken, that can't be taking, medical patients can't be cared for in. Because the ICU is full and we had to hold ICU patients in the emergency departments, that's led to increased ED waiting times. In order to try to relieve some of the capacity issues in the hospital, we actually stopped elective surgeries that require hospitalization. So if you are going to have an elective surgery such as maybe a hip or a knee replacement where you need a overnight stay in the hospital, you can't do that right now because all the beds are full of COVID patients. For the first time in the history of Johnston County, outside of a natural disaster like a bad hurricane, we've been on diversion for ambulances. What does that mean? Well, that meant if you had been critically ill and came by, an ambulance call came to the hospital, we said, "Don't come here because we can't take care of you." It got to the point where there was a day a few weeks ago where if one more critically ill patient had come in, somebody would have not been able to get care because we wouldn't have had the staff or the capabilities to take care of one more critically ill patient. That's how bad it got. You know, it's taken a big toll on our staff. You know, we've seen 37-year-old, I mean, we've seen 33-year-old die, we've seen a 47-year-old die, 47-year-old died this week with COVID. So it's been difficult. Our inpatient census is the highest it's ever been over the past month. Next slide, please. The reason for this is really because of the Delta surge. You know, if you, you may recall that the original COVID virus, one person would infect between two and three people. This most recent variant, the Delta variant, has infection rate of about eight, so one infected person affects about eight. And that explains why we went from four COVID patients over the span of about four weeks to 70, well, actually 84, 75, but hospital numbers don't count previously positive because once you've been in the hospital for more than three weeks, you drop off the list even though you still are there because of COVID. So the number actually is in the 80s that we had there. So it went from four to 84. Next slide. So how do we prevent COVID? Well, I can tell you that in the hospital, with all the COVID patients that we take care of, and me working in the emergency department wearing this, not wearing a fancy mask, I mean, if I take care of a patient that I know has COVID, yes, I wear a more protective mask, but for months, I wore this, and so did the rest of our hospital staff. We had six employees catch COVID from a patient, six out of 2,000 employees. Gives you some idea that masks actually work. Physical distancing, that just makes sense. You know, if you've got someone sick, you stay away from them, you're less likely to catch it. Hand washing also makes sense, wash off the germs. Next slide. Vaccines also work, and this slide proves it without a shadow of a doubt. 100% of our patients that have a tube down their throat that are a COVID patient are unvaccinated. 100% of our ICU patients with COVID are unvaccinated. 93% of the COVID patients in our hospital are unvaccinated. Vaccines work. You asked me about boosters, I'm not going to make comments on those. I can just tell you, these are people who didn't get boosters, clearly it works. Next slide. If you didn't get vaccinated, or even if you do and you catch cases, because we know the Delta variant, you can get COVID even if you've been vaccinated, there's a great treatment called monoclonal antibodies. So everybody should, should be aware that there are three sites that you can get monoclonal antibody treatments in our county, in Benson and Clayton, and at Johnston Health Smithfield in the parking lot, there's a mobile infusion site. So those are all great options, prevent you from getting severe COVID, more than likely prevent you from having to be hospitalized. Next slide. I appreciate your time, appreciate your attention to our teachers and our kids. I'm happy to answer questions if, if there are any.
Thank you, Dr. McCaskill. Thank you, Mr. Williams, for coming. Does the board have any questions for Dr. McCaskill?
Patient or someone that is sick, go seek the monoclonal antibodies. Would that be a referral from their family physician, or is that something that, "I'm feeling real bad and I could contact you directly and get treated"?
If you have a positive COVID test, that's all that's required, positive COVID test symptoms. You know, risk factors make you more, you know, you get higher on the list to get the treatment, but sure, you can reach out to me if you need it. Earlier the better. You don't want to wait till you're sick. They don't work very well when you're really sick. You want to get them early. Basically, the way it works is these antibodies bind active virus in your system, and some studies even say would make you non-contagious in about 24 hours after getting the antibody treatment. So it's a great treatment, needs to be done early. If you wait till you're super sick, it doesn't work very well. So earlier the better. Contact your family doctor. If they can't help you, contact me.
But could you, could I show up like at Smithfield or Clayton at the bus and get treated?
It would be best to have a referral. They probably would be able to squeeze you in, but it'd be better to have a referral.
Okay.
We're happy to get you information on how to get referrals if you'd like.
I just think publicly, that would be good information publicly enough. How do we access that before we get real sick and get that kind of treatment?
We had very good data on how well that worked, just in our small, just in our county, and very good success. I think the only person that didn't do well after the monoclonal antibodies was somebody who was really, really sick and had to go directly from the hospital, right from the site to the hospital. I think that was the only person who didn't do well. They waited too late, essentially.
Any other questions?
Just our great appreciation as a community. I speak for myself, I don't speak for the other board members, but I think they would join me, and please share with your staff our deep appreciation for all their hard work. We know that they're exhausted and that they show up for work every day to save lives, and we appreciate that.
Yeah. They, it's a great staff, and I would definitely share that with them.
And I think I have seen somewhere, we use a calculator to sort of estimate when the peak, when, when the peak of this might occur. Do we have an idea, are we at the peak, or is it a couple of weeks, a month, or, you know, can you share information about when that might occur based on the information we have?
UNC has a calculator that's worked relatively well. You know, it appears that we would be at the peak probably now and hopefully see a decline. I think our county is a little bit ahead of other counties, so we may actually be in the decline. I mean, the biggest problem is it's hard to predict what's going to happen as a result of holidays such as Labor Day that just passed, when folks get together and, you know, don't take precautions, then we tend to see a bit of a spike. We saw some of that around the Fourth of July, and we saw, certainly saw that around, you know, Christmas and after Thanksgiving of last year. So the model would say that numbers are going to get better, but it doesn't take into account Labor Day.
Any other questions?
You see, our vaccination rate, is it coming up any at all?
There's been a slight increase over the past few weeks. I think some of the, I think the information has gotten out. I mean, it would be great to have even more folks come forward. We were in the low, low 50s for the county. You know, we really would like to see it a lot higher than that. I mean, Orange County's 95, Wake County's in the mid-70s to almost 80, and, you know, we're in the mid-50s. So, you know, we should be, we're a competitive county, we're the best county in this, in this state, we should have a higher rate than that.
Where do health officials feel comfortable at a percentage that if we have that percent of our population at least vaccinated, that we would be fairly well protected and be able to, if you will, loosen some of the precautions that we have to live with?
Haven't seen that number specifically. I mean, my, this, I guess, this is a McCaskill guess, so take it however you want. I would say if we could get 80%, that would be a great number. Because that's what we have in the older folks, and if you take a look in the hospital right now, what do we have? We have younger folks in the hospital with COVID complications. It's not the older folks that are vaccinated. Vaccination rate in this county for folks over 65 is about 80%, and they're not the ones at the hospital much with the COVID. And generally, if they do come to the hospital, it's because they didn't get vaccinated, it's part of that 20% that didn't. So that's why I choose 80 as a good number.
Thank you, Dr. McCaskill. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Thank you for everything you guys do at UNC Health over at Johnston Health, and we appreciate each and every employee and what they mean to your staff as well as keeping us all safe during this time. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll go to the approval of our August 10th, 2021 regular session minutes. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Johnson. Second by Mr. Wooton. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries 6-0. At this time, we'll go to discussion and adjustments of our agenda, starting with Mr. Wooton.
Mr. Chairman, the only adjustment I have is separating one of the consent items, number five. If you separate that from all the other consent items and vote separately on all the other consent items in number five.
So we'll move, we'll take out 9A5 out of consent and vote on that separately for additional consent items. Is that correct?
Which number five is contract for supplemental custodial services.
Okay. Got it. Ms. Andrews.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if we would look at 6D, which is schools that exceeded proficiency, I would recommend that we remove that from the agenda tonight, and let's move it to the October board meeting.
Mr. Byrd.
Done.
Mr. Carroll.
I would like to have us add to the agenda discussion and about our virtual learning for our quarantined students. I think, I hope it's being, it's occurring, but we need to get the information out, and we also need to all agree on where we're headed with that.
Okay. Where would you like to add that, Mr. Carroll?
Item B6 under Dr. King. I think that it's going to be under 9B, 9B, Chief Academic Officer.
Got you. Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Mr. Johnson, no further adjustments here. All in favor of the adjustments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries 6-0. At this time, we'll go to updates from our board committees. I'll start with Mr. Wooton with the Finance Committee.
Mr. Chairman, we recently had a Finance Committee meeting yesterday, which was a very informative meeting by Mr. Britt. Currently, our fund balance is sitting at 23 million. We're still in limbo, waiting for the state to adopt a budget, which they haven't adopted one in the last two years. So what's important to us on that is teachers getting raises, which is important to us as well. We've, Mr. Britt has estimated a balanced budget with a state increase and a county funding us 100% of what we requested earlier in this year. You know, it's important for that local funding to happen, which is 7.9 million. There's some important initiatives that can be done with that funding, is TAs for low-performing schools, teacher supplements, classified personnel, the grossly inadequate pay, pay steps for classified staff, we need to look, look after our classified staff, bus driver pay increases, and, I mean, I could go on and on. But until we can get an adopted state budget and know where we are, we're in great position to, to have a balanced budget this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wooton. I appreciate all the work the Finance Committee does, and it's, uh...
Chairman, I also would like to say this, too, and I didn't mean to cut you off there, but this, with this $7.9 million funding from the county, it'd be the first time ever the county commissioners have funded us 100%, but it would also put them in the top 20% of the state for funding their local school system. And I'm excited about that and what we can do for students with that proper funding.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Wooton. Ms. Andrews.
No report from the Legal Committee, but I would like to report from the Policy Committee if I could.
Absolutely.
For Ms. Sessoms, I'm reporting that we met on September the 1st as a policy committee. In attendance were Ms. Sessoms, myself, Ronald Johnson, Al Byrd, David Pearson, Ken Sue, our attorney. We reviewed the regulation that had been presented for Policy 5100. The document was presented by Mr. Johnson, it has been vetted by some administrators and teachers in our system that looked at it closely, and they came to our meeting and we were able, to one of our meetings, and we were able to talk with them about what they thought. And so in that meeting on September 1, we approved this regulation, 5100. It now is in place in our manual. If you look online, in our online manual, it's in the old manual section since we are revisiting and revising a new manual, but it is 5100 accompanied by 5100R, which is our regulation. This regulation was designed to clarify and direct the policy of 5100. So we're glad to have that in place.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews, for stepping in for Ms. Sessoms. Thank you to the Policy Committee. It's, you guys do a lot of work behind the scenes on a lot of policies, and I think you're meeting again on Thursday of this week, is that correct?
Thursday at 2:00. Yep.
Okay. But appreciate all your hard work and all of, you know, the finance and policy working hand in hand to make sure that we get the additional $7.9 million to assist everyone that Mr. Wooton had discussed in his update. So thank you all very much. At this time, we'll go to special recognitions.
I apologize about a little bit of technical difficulties we had at the beginning of the meeting. As you all are well aware, I wear many hats in this role, so just kind of jumping in as needed. Again, good evening Chairman Sutton, Dr. Bracy, members of the board, Mr. Sue. I am coming before you this evening to present our special recognitions for the month of September, and we're going to start with character education recognitions, which we haven't done in the past few months because of summer and, you know, kind of getting school off the... off the ground. And we're bringing these students to you virtually tonight. So, if you look up on the screens, you can see their smiling faces, their principals were more than happy to share their photos with us this week. Our first student being recognized is 5th grade student Carolina Choto. She's from Cleveland Elementary, where Dr. Ryan Yule is principal. Carolina is being recognized for demonstrating responsibility. Dr. Yule said Carolina exhibits responsibility in many ways on a daily basis. She has a very strong work ethic and completes all work independently. She can always be trusted to help with any task and assist other students on a regular basis, even without being asked. Carolina is always kind to others and tries to include everyone. She takes pride in being dependable and trustworthy. She takes responsibility for her actions related to tasks, completing work, and how she treats others. She has been a Cleveland star since kindergarten and represents the school community well. Carolina truly deserves to be recognized for the character trait of responsibility. And we'll hold our round of applause for these kids at the end. The next student we have to recognize is Xavier Oliveria. He's a 12th grade student at Cleveland High, where Ms. Jenna Saul's hair is the principal. Xavier is being recognized for demonstrating perseverance. Ms. Hair said that Xavier has such a positive attitude and a willingness to go the extra mile to ensure his academic success. He is friendly and compassionate to all the students in his classes. He treats his teachers with respect and is very focused and diligent in his studies. He self-advocates and takes responsibility for his actions, holding himself to a high standard, both academically and morally. He is focused on his future and looking forward to a career in the United States Marine Corps, as he has already enlisted and will be taking, will be in the infantry. Xavier will graduate in December and begin basic training in January. He is the kind of young man that makes you feel positive about the future of our country. The next student we're recognizing is Samantha Perez Hernandez, an 8th grade student at Cleveland Middle School, where Ms. Sarah Reynolds is principal. Samantha is being recognized for demonstrating respect. Ms. Reynolds says that when thinking of respect, Samantha's name immediately pops into mind for anybody that knows her. She is extremely polite and shows respect both with her classmates and teachers. When she has a question, she is determined to find a solution, and she completes tasks in a calm, efficient manner. She is a part of the Cleveland Middle avid family and works well with her peers and is always willing to help out a fellow classmate. Samantha exhibits stellar behavior and has respect for all others in all situations, making her a great addition to the classroom. She thinks of other people's feelings first and foremost. The next student we have is Brayden Maylie, a 5th grade student at Palenta Elementary, where Ms. Kristy Benson is serving as principal. Brayden is being recognized for demonstrating self-discipline. Ms. Benson said that Brayden exhibits self-discipline on a daily basis, both in the classroom and throughout the school. Brayden stays focused on his assignments and will go out of his way to help others whenever possible. He is a flexible learner and approaches and embraces challenges with a positive attitude and a will to succeed. He advocates for himself and is willing to ask questions to deepen his understanding for any new concept. Additionally, he encourages his classmates to do the same. He is a leader in the classroom and can be counted on to make good choices and model responsible behavior. Brayden is a puma on the move. And the last student we're recognizing this evening is Mr. Omari Stokes, an 8th grade student at Swift Creek Middle, where Dr. Carrie Evans is principal. Dr. Evans said Omari has impressed each of his teachers this school year. He is the first to help out a teacher or fellow student if they are in need. Recently, Omari showed how much integrity has, he has, when, as usual, he straightened out the books and the teacher offered him a piece of candy as thanks. He immediately said, "No, thank you," that he couldn't accept the candy because he did not work alone that day. Apparently, several other students had helped as well. His honesty and integrity made a huge impression on the teacher. It is refreshing to see such character and admirable qualities, especially in students at such a young age. We are exceptionally proud of these students. Please join me in giving them a round of applause. And the next group, we're kind of trying to keep up with a theme like we started with you all last month. We know that you all know this, but we have an exceptional group of individuals that work in our school system. So, we just kind of wanted to give a shout out to our custodial services staff. I had multiple people come to me and say, "Hey, I really liked what you did for our summer learning staff. Can we really, you know, toot the horn of some other people as well?" And I said, "Absolutely." The first person who actually brought it to my attention was their supervisor, Mr. Dewey Baker. He is a servant leader at its finest. So, I would just like to give him a shout out as a, as his colleague. He's exceptional to work with, and I know that he can be counted on with his staff and is the first to jump in if they need him. But I asked him, you know, "You work with them directly, can you share a few words with me about them?" And he said, "Certainly." So, he said that between the 141 custodial staff, seven floaters, and 14 temps, we have approximately 162 staff members trying to maintain all of the buildings for Johnston County Public Schools. He said the custodians do a fantastic job, despite the additional duties that they have been added since COVID started, and despite most of them doing dual roles. Most custodians have worked overtime to get schools cleaned and sanitized for our students each school year, and they do it with a smile. Some schools only have one or two custodians in their building at the moment, and even with summer being shorter than usual and working through summer learning, the custodians stepped up their game and worked the custodial piece for the summer school and top of all the additional cleaning to get the schools ready for the school year. The custodians are normally in early, normally in early in the mornings or working late in the evenings to make the job easier to maintain while students aren't in the buildings. We cannot express enough appreciation for what our custodial staff does on a daily basis. We didn't have them physically here with us today because they are working all the time. So, these are just some great photos that we have taken, you know, over the past several months with them, you know, kind of going the extra mile. And Mr. Baker said I would be remiss to not give him a plug and say, "If you want to join his team, please come do, because they're a great bunch to work with, and we have some vacancies throughout the district." So, please join me in thanking them for all that they do as well. And that is all I have for you. I believe Mr. Brian Vetrano is up next.
Thank you, Ms. Fur. Good evening again, board members. Always my privilege to come before you and talk about outstanding employees. And you see on the screen before you that there are three employees that we want to highlight this evening. Mr. Kevin Hill, James Lee, and Mr. Matthew Lee. They are all mechanics in Transportation Services. And our Auxiliary Services and Safety Officer, Mr. Chase Farrell, nominated them. And I would like to read to you what Mr. Farrell had to share. Kevin Hill, James Lee, and Matthew Lee work as mechanics in the Transportation Services Department and are excellent at their craft. On June 10, 2021, around 5:30 in the evening, a bus slid off a wet, soft shoulder on Highway 222 and gently slid down an embankment about 10 feet into a ditch. Fortunately, the two students nor the driver on the bus received a scratch, and they were able to exit the bus quickly and safely. However, the bus was sitting in a ditch at a 45-degree angle. Kevin, James, and Matthew worked in the pouring rain for three and a half hours and used every tool in their arsenal to pull the bus out of the ditch and keep it from tipping over. It was a work of art, as they used two wreckers and multiple cables to pull the bus out and to keep from damaging the bus. With such a difficult and dreary task, they could have easily thrown up their hands and had a "you figure it out" attitude. But instead, they analyzed the situation carefully, made calculated adjustments, and saw the job through. One of the most impressive things about this scenario is that they all had a smile on their face the entire time they were crawling in the ditch, around the bus, and in the bus in order to get everything hooked up properly. These employees worked as a well-oiled machine and collaborated wonderfully to arrive at the right formula to get this bus out of the ditch and back to the shop with no significant damage. Our school system is fortunate to have their skills, talents, and work ethic in this district. So, we would like to highlight these three gentlemen, and they represent many of our wonderful employees in our school district. We appreciate what they did back in June and each and every day for our school system. If you'll join me in congratulating them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vetrano. At this time, we'll go to our advisory appointments, starting with Mr. Johnson.
...has recommended one new member, Cheryl Holland, to serve on the Selma Elementary Advisory Council. Moving forward to Smithville Middle School, with one renewal from Ms. Faison, Deborah Davis, and one new member, Terry Lee, to serve on the Smithville Middle School Advisory Council.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We'll let that stand as our motion. At this time, Dixon Road Elementary, by Mr. Carroll.
Yes, Ms. Creed has sent us three renewals, Brian Clifton, Misty Zimmerman, Bert Stoner, and a new member, April Hand, for Dixon Road to serve three years, 21 to 24.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. We'll let that stand as our second. Moving on to Palenta Elementary.
Yes, Ms. Christina Benson, principal of Palenta Elementary, asked us to renew, or to consider for renewal Tracy Mio Desiswicky? I don't, if I said it wrong, I'm so sorry. But as a member of the Palenta Elementary School Advisory Council.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Now moving to West Clayton.
Principal Paige Barnes has asked us to consider for one renewal Arlene Wright and one new member, Karen Katie Swanson, to serve on the West Clayton Elementary School Advisory Council.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Moving to Princeton Elementary.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Melissa Hurst, the principal, recommended one renewal, Eddie Oliver, and four new members, Kevin Donovan, Caitlin Hartley, Brandon Holland, and Sarah Willoughby to serve on their advisory board.
Thank you, Mr. Wooton. Four Oaks Middle School.
Yes, Mr. Anthony Whitaker, principal of Four Oaks Middle Schools, asked us to recommend Jamie Pierce, one renewal Jamie Pierce, and two new members, Melissa Roberts and Meredith Fordham, to serve on the Four Oaks Middle School Advisory Council.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Moving to Glendale Kinley, Principal Kelly Holland wishes to recommend Brian Strickland for renewal, Megan Starlin, Martin Rowe, and Atiya Hicks as new members and appointees for a three-year term, 2021 through 2024. Then Thanksgiving Elementary School Principal Chad Jewett wishes to recommend Angela Gutiérrez and Nicole Corbett, both new members, to a three-year term of 2021 through 2024. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries 6-0. Next on our agenda is public comment. We'll take care of that. At 6 o'clock, we will be breaking around 5:55 to prepare for public comment. So, moving forward, I'll turn it over to Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Ms. Chair, at this time, I ask that the board approve consent items numbers 1 through 4 and the 6 through 12.
Slow move. Motion by Mr. Carroll, second by Mr. Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. And this time, we...
I'd like to recuse myself on voting on number 5.
Okay. So, we got consent item 9A5. Mr. Wooton is recusing himself from this vote. Entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Ms. Andrews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries 5-0. Dr. King.
This evening, we have a number of items for you. We'll begin with our 2020-2021 summative data review. This will be a review of student performance over the last school year. At this time, we'll ask our Executive Director for Student Achievement, Ms. Kristy Stevenson, to come forward and make this presentation.
Good evening, Chairman Sutton, members of the board, Dr. Bracy. Tonight, we are presenting an overview for you on our, if we can advance to the summative data presentation. We're going to provide an overview for you on our summative data. As we're getting that presentation up, a couple of points I'd like to make to you as we reflect on this data. The U.S. Department of Education did provide a waiver to accountability, so school performance grades are not being reported this year. Basically, the State Department is reporting our achievement performance, but there are a couple of things we need to keep in mind as we look at that data. One being that with the interruption to learning since March of 2020, we would expect our achievement data to go down. And as you will see in the presentation, our results did drop. But as we look at this data, this data is simply to inform continuous improvement efforts. It's really, we should not be using it to evaluate or make comparisons because across the, across the state, there are variances in one, different types of learning modalities last year. So, if, are we about ready to advance to that? If not, I can keep talking. Keep moving. All right. So, in addition to the interruption of learning since March of 2020, we have noted that there was learning loss. And as I said, as we look at this data, please keep in mind that there were differing modes of instruction last year. We had virtual, we had face-to-face, we had hybrid, not only within our county but across the state as well. Attendance and engagement in learning would impact our student achievement data, as well as variance in test windows across the state. The state of North Carolina did allow flexibility in our testing window, so in many cases, say for example, the fall test window, we actually did makeups all the way to the end of the year because we recognize COVID, you know, for varying reasons. We had to allow flexibility to get students into tests. Another factor that we need to consider are our participation rates. Typically, in Johnston County, we have, there we go, we have a 99 to 100% participation rate on our summative test. You will see on our end-of-grade and end-of-course test, we had a 98 to 97% participation rate, which is phenomenal. And I really would want to commend our schools as well as our families for bringing our students in to assess, because with this data, it informs instructional next steps as well as continuous improvement efforts. I've also provided there the participation rate for the state, so you'll see in comparison to the state, our rate was higher than that of the state. You'll notice there for ACT, we were, we had a 92% participation rate. ACT is given at the, during the junior year, and again, this is typically up around the 99% mark. But when the ACT was administered, it was during a time of virtual learning for us. The school system did work very hard to provide transportation and bus our students in during that time. So, again, you see that is a lower rate than normal, and we are also offering some continued makeup sessions for the ACT, because ACT data is actually banked from 11th grade to 12th grade for accountability purposes. You also note that our work keys, work keys is an assessment taken by our Career and Technical Education Concentrators to evaluate workplace readiness... education concentrators to evaluate work, workplace readiness. That participation rate was also lower than what we typically see. Moving on to our performance composite trend, this is our overall proficiency, the percent of students who scored a level three, four, or five on an end-of-course or end-of-grade assessment. And as mentioned, we did expect to see a decrease, and that is noted there in the 2021 school year. Couple of things I'd like to note. Johnston County, we saw about a 10-point decrease from where we were in 2019. This is in comparison to the drop, the 13.4% drop that the state saw. So while our regression was there, it was smaller than that compared to the state. Also, if you'll notice, our discrepancy to the state is now, is, is, we're getting closer to the state average. So we did not drop as much as the state, and our discrepancy to the state was reduced. This graphic gives a breakout of our end-of-grade assessments at the elementary and middle school level, reading, math, as well as science. You'll notice there math had the biggest dip. We dropped by about 14 percentage points. However, that discrepancy, when you compare that orange to that blue bar, you'll notice the discrepancy to the state is smaller than it was pre-COVID. Likewise, in reading, we saw about a nine and a half percentage point decrease with a discrepancy of four points to the state. Science, you'll notice our blue bar there is higher than the state average. So while we did observe a decrease in proficiency, we were actually, our performance in science was greater than that of the state. Taking a little bit deeper dive, looking particularly like at our elementary school data, you'll notice again, mathematics had the largest slip in proficiency, followed by science. And again, while this was expected, this gives us insight as to where we need to put our continuous improvement efforts. The next slide gives you that breakdown for math. Again, or I'm sorry, for middle school, again, math is the area of most, where we saw the most learning loss occur. Taking a look at our high school end-of-course assessments for English II, Math I, Math III, and Biology, you'll notice there same trend. Math I was the, is the area of most focus for us with the largest decrease. Again, that discrepancy to the state did get smaller. In Math III, you'll notice we maintained pretty much where our proficiency rate was. And in Biology and English II, though there was a dip, it was not as significant as what we saw in Math I. The next slide is just a graphic over time of our, of our Johnston County school end-of-course data, just highlighting again that Math III, we maintained. Math I is the area of focus for, the biggest area of focus for us, followed by Biology and then English II. So how did our subgroups fare? What was the impact on our subgroups due to COVID? That purple bar gives you an indication of where each of the subgroups fell. You'll notice if you compare the trends to previous, compared to last year, that, that achievement gap still exists. There was, no one subgroup saw any significant losses over another subgroup. The decline was about the same across subgroups. But I will add here, when you look at it from a district perspective, it looks like the loss was, was relatively the same. But this summer, as we worked with schools to disaggregate their data, schools with a higher population of LEP and SWD saw a greater regression. So as they began to work on their continuous improvement and school improvement plans, they were very targeted in the strategies that they have written to address the learning loss of their LEP and students with disabilities. Moving to our cohort graduation rate, you'll see there our graduation rate, the blue line represents our four-year cohort graduation rate. We continue to maintain a high, greater than 90% graduation rate. We are still above the state, even though we saw a very slight decrease. The, the North Carolina Department of Education did extend our time for when students could graduate. We could graduate students through August 6th of this year. And those that counted in the graduation rate, we had actually 75 students to take advantage of that extra opportunity and graduated to count in, in this set of data. Oops. Backing back up to our college and career readiness data, this is our ACT data. As I mentioned, we give this in the 11th grade year. And while our participation rate was lower, you'll, you'll notice if you take a look at the by-subject area, the two subject areas that showed up as those needing the most focus on our end-of-course exams, also you see that decline here. So again, math and science are our two big areas of focus. Looking down at the work keys data, which is our, more of our career readiness data as this assesses work, workplace readiness, you'll notice typically we are above the state, but in 2021, we did drop ever so slightly below the state there. Just to talk a little bit about the impact that summer learning had on our end-of-year summative data. As you know, summer learning was a six-week program, and one way we looked at the effectiveness of that program was to take students who had assessed on our spring MAP data, which is our, our universal screener in Johnston County in grades K through eight, and compare it to how they performed at the end of summer learning. Students that had both of those data points that attended summer learning, you'll notice there we had just over 6,000 students who had both math scores. The percentage of our students meeting growth, so it, so, so they showed from spring to summer that the impact of that summer learning was, was positive for them. We had right at 65.9% of our students showed growth in math and in reading, 58.9. So our summer learning program had some significant impact in our K8 population. The percentage of students, so you've got growth and you've got meeting the grade level norm. Growth is going from where I am and showing improvement. Grade level, a grade level norm is reaching that grade level standard. Of our students that attended summer learning, you see there we had 23 and then 26% of our students who were not previously at grade level norm by the end of it, reaching that proficiency mark. So again, summer learning had a positive impact on our students. We also, for students that were not proficient on the end-of-grade or end-of-course assessment, we also did provide those students an opportunity to reassess midway through our summer learning program because all state assessment scores have to be in by the end of June. That is why we opted to give that at the midway point. Here, you can see the number of students that tested in grades three through eight, math, 5-8 science, as well as our end-of-course EOCs, and the, how many of those students were proficient there. We did not offer reading this past summer as a, as an opportunity to retake the end-of-grade assessment because as many of you know, the reading assessment was renormed this past summer and reading scores were delayed. So therefore, we were not able to provide that as an option for students to take. The percentage there, the impact it had on our overall end-of-grade performance was a 2.5% increase on our EOG subjects and a 0.5% point increase on our EOC performance. We did not have as much participation on our EOC assessments at the high school level. And that was pretty much because the, the rules are a little bit different for high school than our, than our elementary and middle school.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yep.
I apologize, but we're gonna, can we postpone you? I know you've got a few more slides.
Yep.
Is that gonna be okay or?
Yeah, that's gonna be fine. I've got about two more minutes.
If it's, then go ahead.
I shall have questions.
No, go ahead. That's fine. Go ahead.
Okay. Cool. All right. And in closing, my last data point is the read-to-achieve assessment. So legislation states by the end of third grade, we want students reading on grade level. So taking a look specifically at our reading data for first, second, and third grade, at the end of the school year, you can see there that first column gives you the percent of our students meeting proficiency through the MAP assessment or in third grade by the EOG or the MAP assessment. You can, the next column shows you the, the number of students that attended summer reading camp that were not previously proficient, and that percentage there. And then that final column shows the percentage of students who met proficiency through summer learning. So for our third grade students who were not proficient, they are placed in a third, fourth grade transition class and receive extra support this year to help get them to that proficiency mark. So in closing, as I mentioned at the beginning, this data really is not, should not be used to evaluate because of the interruptions in learning, but really used to guide continuous improvement efforts. And as we reflect back on our Johnston County goal, by the end of the 23-24 school year, 100% of our schools getting to that A, B, or C, we've outlined several different district initiatives that are taking place to address the data that, that I've presented here. And those are listed there, so.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. As always, I appreciate the detail of the data and explanation that you, that you put forth in this information. So thank you very much. At this time, we'll take a short break to get ready for public comment. Good evening. We will be entering the public comments section of our agenda when the meeting returns. When called, speakers should come forward and address the board for up to three minutes. Public comment is limited. Public comment is limited to matters relating to the school system. State and/or federal laws and regulations provide protection for the privacy of school employees and students. Therefore, the board and staff cannot address concerns about individual students and staff members in open session. Complaints related to personnel and student issues are best addressed through the Board of Education's Grievancy Policies, Policy 1740, 4010, 5240, or directed to the appropriate administrator rather than through public comment. Proper decorum is expected to be followed at all public meetings of the Board of Education. A Board of Education meeting is a business meeting of the board and is conducted in an orderly, efficient, effective, and dignified manner. We request that the audience keep that in mind and not demonstrate approval or disapproval of what a speaker has said by clapping, booing, or being disorderly in any other fashion. Any individual who willfully interrupts, disrupts, or causes a disturbance during our board meeting will be subject to removal from the meeting. The board appreciates the public's input and will listen attentively and consider each comment. The board will not respond to individuals who address the board except clarification of points made by the presenter. We also have some online comments that will, will be linked to our agenda. Thank you very much. Our first public comment tonight is from Madison Cawthorn.
Well, hello, members of the board. Thank you very much for having me out today. I believe that fear is a tyrant's favorite tool. No weapon is greater. No tool is stronger. Because when fear is king and panic reigns, freedom trembles. I'm here today to fight for our children. Our children live in a world where science and reason have been cast aside and replaced with fear. I will not sit idly by while this happens. Our children have been muzzled, forced to grow up in a world where their emotions are hidden and their voices are smothered. During the most impressionable times of their lives, children should not be forced to obey destructive, unscientific mandates from the heavy hand of government. The left is not listening to science. They are grasping for power. The left doesn't believe in science, doesn't even believe in the science behind masks. Nancy Pelosi held a maskless fundraiser days ago. AOC was seen dancing masks around a gala last night. But according to them, we are the radicals for demanding that our children be unmasked as well. The science is on our side. Deaths in children under the age of 17 constitute .27%. I'll say that again, .27% of all COVID deaths in the United States, many involving underlying conditions. More children have been shot in the streets of Chicago this year than have died of COVID. But the left's silence on those children is deafening. I've said it before and I'll say it again, forcing our children to wear masks is nothing short of psychological child abuse. Suicide attempts from children and teens stunted in their social interactions skyrocketed 250% in 2020 with, done by one, one study by a, a hospital in the United States. Even the World Health Organization's own guidance last year warned masks could have been an impact on children's psychological development. Children are struggling to breathe, struggling to concentrate. They're fighting headaches and they're struggling to learn. We're here today in the heart of our state, in King Roy Cooper's backyard, to declare no more. It's time to be fearless. It's time to stand up to Roy Cooper and say that firmly, that the family and individual freedom always comes before the government. You must fearlessly stand up to Roy Cooper. I know this will be difficult, but doing the right thing always is. The eyes of our children are upon us. They will remember your actions when tyranny came knocking at our door. Because remember, the shortest path to tyranny runs through the classroom. Set a precedent today for freedom in the state of North Carolina. Defy Roy Cooper. Make masks optional, end contact tracing, and end these burdensome quarantine requirements. Let us declare in one loud voice that we will no longer be bullied by radicals who trample our liberties in the name of safety. Hold the line, defend the cause, preserve our nation, and protect our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cawthorn. Our next speaker is Ms. Kelly Caspar.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Kelly Caspar. I am a parent of four children in the Johnston County Public School System, and I also am a public health community nurse. But what comorbidities did they have? This is the question I hear daily, whether in passing conversation, the comment thread of a social media post, or a patient questioning the validity of our medical advice. COVID does not discriminate. It has forever changed the lives of countless Americans, some healthy, some with chronic illnesses, the rich, the poor, celebrities, the homeless. It does not care what race you are. It does not care who you voted for. As a nurse, I have seen the devastation of lives, not only from death, that .27% rate that Madison just touted, but also from serious, long-lasting effects and disabilities. To say only a certain percent died voids the worth of these people. To say they died because they had a comorbidity trivializes their suffering and negates their worth. America is better than that. We as true patriots are willing to do whatever it takes to keep all of our children from harm. Every single child deserves the chance to go to school and to be safe in that school. Unmasking our children opens the door for clusters that will close our schools, forcing our children to once again learn via countless hours of screen time and shutting out the special needs population entirely, as they will lose access to speech therapy, socialization, and other resources that help everyone. It's time that we actually mean no child left behind. Before the Americans with Disabilities Act, businesses could do whatever they wanted. They could, restaurants could refuse to serve the disabled, theaters, grocery stores, all of these people could say, if you're in a wheelchair, get out. Library access was denied. You cannot get in. The government stepped in and made that change. The government did things like curb cuts, ramps, and flat ramped entrances and parking spaces and handicapped accessible bathrooms, up to and including the handicapped accessible porta potty outside. Madison would not have been able to even get in this building today if the government had not stepped in to protect the freedoms of everyone. So his idea of government not intervening to protect the rights of all of our students is built on a false sense of security, an idea that we should respect the freedom of the many with none of the responsibilities to the few. In much the same way parents flock to the call to stop polio, this board too has the opportunity to be on the right side of history by putting politics aside and erring on the side of caution. Because at the end of the day, a piece of fabric blocking droplet spread is a small price to pay to help keep our children, all of our children, safe and in school where they belong. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robbie Starbuck.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I want to address you guys first from a factual point of view because it seems like there must be confusion in these school boards over what the facts actually are. So I think that most people on this board would agree that the CDC is giving you good information, correct? So I would lead you guys towards the CDC's May study, which is the only study they've done on the efficacy of masks, which determined when they looked in Georgia at over 90,000 students, 169 schools, they found that the masks showed no statistical significance in terms of efficacy in preventing COVID among children. Okay? Now, I want to also read you guys something else because outside of the U.S., this is not a controversial finding. In the UK, Ireland, all of Scandinavia, France, the Netherlands, Switzerland, Italy, I keep going, they don't mask children in schools. They not only don't mask children in schools, they are not mandating children to get vaccines or anything along those lines, and we all know that's what's coming next. So if the factual point of view, the fact that our children, like Madison said, the likelihood of one of, a child in America dying in the streets of Chicago or another major city is higher than them dying of COVID, actually, the chance of them dying of a lightning strike also higher than the chance of a child dying of COVID here in the United States. Okay? If those facts are not enough, I want to appeal to your understanding of history. My family came from Cuba. In Cuba, a dictatorial government that would not admit they were a dictatorial government, that would not admit they were a communist or Marxist government, rose to power, the entire time saying that they believed in education for all, saying they believed in safety. They believed in taking care of the healthcare of their citizens. That's what they said when they rose to power. That's what they said when Castro rose to power and stole everything my family ever worked for. It led to the results we see today. It led to situations that people in my own family faced, like the blindfold test, which you may not be familiar with, where the Cuban government went into schools, they separated children from their parents, they brought the kids in, and they put blindfolds on them. They asked the kids, they put a bowl in front of them, and they said, pray to God for ice cream. They took the blindfolds off, no ice cream there. They put the blindfolds back on and they said, pray to Castro, pray to the party for ice cream. The kids did, they took the blindfolds off, and the ice cream was there. That was science that they taught them. That's what they said at least. That was for their safety, they said. That's what they believed at least. And in the beginning, nobody saw it coming, but in the end, once they consolidated power, they stole everything. And the way that our school boards are moving towards ripping away parental rights, being the arbiters of decisions that should fall with the parents, is going to end in a similarly disgusting place. I hope you got these things, as you can see.
Thank you, Ms. Starbuck. Thank you. Our next speaker, Sandy Smith.
Hello. My name is Ashley Gillian-Mallum. We had a mix-up. I'm a junior at Princeton High School. Some of you may remember me from a couple of years ago when I received the award for having the most school spirit. This award meant that I cared a great deal about my school, my fellow students, and my community. I still do care a great deal about my school and my fellow students, and that is why I've come to you today. Before school started, you made masks optional for schools, and that thrilled my entire town and school of Princeton. We as students were finally excited to come back to school. But right before school started, you changed your minds and decided to force every single student to wear a mask at all times when in school. The news devastated my school and killed our morale. The first day of school felt like torture. After not having to wear a mask all day in summer, wearing it for seven to eight hours a day was one of the worst punishments someone could have dealt. Some students have to wear it for 10 hours because they have sports too. Let me ask you all a question, everyone, all of you. By show of hands, how many of you wear a mask while you're around your friends? In your homes? Where you are safe? Where you feel safe? Do you feel safe outside, around your friends? People that you're around every day? People you see every single day? I don't either. So it doesn't make sense why I have to wear a mask at school when I'm not going to be wearing it outside of school around the same exact people. These masks have deeply wounded me and my classmates' excitement for school day. We now dread going to school because we're forced to put on a hot and sticky mask all day with one break for lunch. And let me remind you, that is not a mask break. That is lunch. When you reconsider your mask mandate, please remember that us students are the ones affected. We already have limited freedom, and you're just taking away more of it. Let people choose whether or not they want to wear it. If people are worried about getting sick, then have them have the option to wear a mask at school. Switch to an online school or even homeschool. There are options for people who are scared, so why are you taking away our choice when you give others so many options to choose from? Please stop trying to accommodate to scared adults and try to accommodate to us miserable Thank you, and I hope you can understand our side of the situation.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Renee Borges. Borgesy, thank you.
I am Renee Borgesy. I am running to be a Congresswoman for the North Carolina's 4th Congressional District. I've been a nurse for 30 years. I've worked in the ICU, in the emergency department, as well as a flight nurse. I'm also a cancer survivor, 20 years now, and I have comorbidities, and my husband has chronic lymphoma. So to say the least, we have a vested interest in what's going on with our health. I understand that COVID is real. I understand the possible implications of contracting the virus both for adults and for children. And I understand that you are tasked with making a decision whether or not our, our children should wear masks at school. I would say that I implore you to consider the negative impacts. Throughout the school year, we are talking about 1,025 hours of masking, not including bus travel or before or after school or athletic events. Only 7% of our communication is verbal, 7%. 93% is transmitted by tone of voice as well as body language. Face masks prohibit the emotional signal, signaling between students and students and between students and teachers. At its most basic level, the face provides the ability to communicate emotion. You are faced with asking our children to give up the ability to communicate their emotions for 1,025 hours over the course of the school year. For perspective, that's 42.7 days of masking. I mentioned I'm a cancer survivor. My son was nine when I went through chemotherapy and radiation. For the better part of a year, he was worried that his mom might die. No matter how much I tried to reassure him, no matter how many conversations we had, that's where he went. He was scared and worried. For years after, every time I caught a cold or had an ache or pain, that's where his mind went. He was a child he didn't understand, and that was a child that had a trusting, loving relationship with a parent. Our actions and decisions have consequences. 1,025 hours is not an insignificant amount of time. The pandemic has created an environment of distrust. We distrust people whether they have a mask or they don't, whether they've had a vaccine or they don't. Our children are not immune. They mimic what they see, and they are suffering. Let's give our children back their childhood. Let's allow them to send and receive emotional cues with their friends, family, and teachers. Let's avoid putting undue stress on them, and let's not mask them for 1,025 hours this year with a mask that provides little to no value in, in the preventing transmission of the virus. The fears that my son faced at age nine are the same fears that children are facing today. We need to find a solution that allows our children to engage in normal social communication and developmental growth while also keeping them safe from the virus. The mask simply is not that solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Beck.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. While some of the others speaking tonight will say that mass choice is the desire of the majority of schoolchildren and their parents, I do not believe that to be the case. I, enrollment numbers for our school system alone prove that most kids and their parents will do what is necessary to keep kids in, in the classrooms. The masks are working. Our COVID case counts and quarantine numbers are significantly better than similarly sized districts who have mass choice. COVID is not over, and it likely won't be for a while. It is imperative that we maintain mandatory masks until our district and county numbers go down substantially. Things are getting worse daily. Our hospitals are becoming overrun with COVID patients, and that means that they can't treat things like heart attack, stroke, gunshot wounds, et cetera. If we get to that magic 80% number and you guys want to lift the mask mandate, I'll accept it, but we're not there. I want to ask these parents where they have been? Where they've been while our state, House, and Senate have gutted our education budget? Where they've been when we have been losing teachers and specialists left and right to other districts who can pay more because they have a larger tax base? You don't seem to care about the fact that we have TAs being pulled from EC classrooms to drive buses or sub in other rooms. They don't seem to care that we can't even get subs because the pay is abysmal. As for the CRT issue, CRT is not being taught to schoolchildren. Teaching an accurate representation of history is not CRT. And if children develop empathy for... And if children develop empathy for others as a result of learning this accurate history, I don't see that as a bad thing. I teach my children that while there are many wonderful things about America, there are also many lessons to be learned from history, so that we do not repeat it. When I talk to my children about being a good friend and an ally to their friends of color, their LGBTQ friends, their friends with different religious beliefs, I am not shaming them or making them feel bad. I am teaching them that based on the way our society is set up, they have a certain privilege, a privilege that they have not earned, a privilege that I have not earned. A privilege based on their race, and that is just how it is, and it's unfortunate, and it sucks, and I hope to change it one day. I teach them to stand up for their friends and neighbors. I teach them to boost voices of others so that they can be heard. One of my children wanted to be here tonight to speak to you about this issue. Unfortunately, the situation outside made it unsafe for him to come. He would have told you that CRT is not being taught in our schools. He would have told you that learning about cultures that are not his own is beneficial to his education. He also would have told you that he's happy to wear a mask to protect his friends. The goal I have as a parent is to raise kind, caring young men who will go out into the world and make it a better, safer, and more empathetic place. I would hope that others would have the same goal, including you all on our Board of Education.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Next, Kara Chester.
Increased carbon dioxide, decreased oxygen, headaches, dizziness, drowsiness, bacterial, viral, and fungal contamination, respiratory impairment, exhaustion, increased blood pressure, increased temperature and humidity, itching, irritation, acne, impaired skin barriers, decreased empathy, false sense of security, communication disorders. These are all side effects from wearing masks. These effects are even more pronounced in someone who is sick. When masks are used by the general public, there is an increased risk for infection because of standard hygiene practices, followed by doctors and surgeons are not followed by most general adults, no less kids. History has shown us that flu pandemics in 1918, 1957, and 1968, masks and everyday use did not help achieve the slowing of the spread of these infections. COVID-19 is no different. Let us learn from history rather than having it repeat itself. Your stated reason for mask mandate is for health reasons and to keep students from close contact from quarantining. However, this is not happening. Classes are still being quarantined, even if kids wear masks. If the reason for wearing masks is health, then why do you punish kids with ISS whose face masks slipped down over their face more than three times? Or why do you punish the whole class by taking mask breaks away when just a couple kids are bad? Why are kids having to eat lunch on the floor where they have been walking all day? The reason for these mask mandates is not health of our kids, it's all about control. You are trying to control our kids. We, the parents of Johnston County, are here to tell you tonight that we will not be controlled. Parents have the right to choose what is best for our kids, not you, the school board. Neither does the governor or the president. We will not comply, we will not be controlled. The Declaration of Independence states, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." It also states that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or abolish it. By instituting these ridiculous mask mandates, you are infringing on our rights as American citizens of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We do not consent, we do not comply. We will take actions to ensure these mask mandates are ended, and we will hold you, the governing body of these schools, responsible if it continues. Our country was founded on the principles of freedom. I will not stop fighting until we get our freedoms back.
Thank you, Ms. Chester. Ms. Chester. Thank you, Ms. Chester. Next is Alan Hall.
All right, so before I start, I want to actually came here to talk about, I want to say this whole circus outside is absolutely ridiculous, and I do appreciate the Board taking the time to, to miss Sessom to come back to call a vote on that today. So it's been said that history is often written by the victors, but in the case of the Civil War, that statement may not hold true. While the Union Army of the North won the war, the Southern Confederacy may have won the narrative that followed. Soon after the failure of Reconstruction, the United Daughters of the Confederacy went to work writing textbooks, and therefore history across the school systems in the South. They did so by blacklisting textbooks that they felt were unjust to the institutions of the South, and publishing new ones that had heard through their distorted version of the Civil War history. This was known as the lost cause narrative. They reframed the Confederacy as a heroic defense of the Southern way of life against the overwhelming forces in the North. Their strategy was to preserve and teach their distorted perception of the war. This included the much romanticized lives of slaves and the relationships they had with their masters, which has been indoctrinated into so many people's minds that it is still believed to this day. The truth, however, doesn't mind being questioned, but a lie can't stand to be challenged, and America is built on a lie, the lie of white supremacy. We're all taught that lie by pretending it doesn't exist. Many people here today deny white privilege, they deny there's racial injustice in every American institution. We are taught to ignore these things in our schools, teachers are supposed to pretend that it doesn't exist. The state of Tennessee will fine a school district $5 million for teaching students the truth of our history. They are forced to teach their students a lie of how our founding fathers were great, moral, and just men. I asked my sixth grade son what historical black figures he learned about while in school only. You know what the answers are: the Martin Luther King Jr., Rosa Parks, Harriet Tubman, and George Washington Carter. This means our teachers are omitting so much history, such as Elizabeth Mombet Freeman, who sued and won her freedom in 1781, or Black Wall Street, or the Tulsa Race Massacre of 1921, where there were more than 300 black residents that were killed by whites. 10,000 black people were left homeless and interned in camps. This is not to mention the historic Greensboro set-in, or the massacre perpetrated by white supremacists in 1899, 1898, rather, right down the road in Wilmington. History sometimes is ugly, and we should be ashamed of it, but black history is also American history. Now, let's talk about critical race theory. Let me start by saying CRT is an academic framework used to assess inequity in higher education, not something that's being taught in our public schools. With that said, what is wrong with teaching our children the truth, the truth behind 500 years of lies of white supremacy? I'm running out of time, so in closing, we require you to push back against the Board of Commissioners and state CRT is not being taught in our schools, but at the same time, nothing would not dictate American history, be whitewashed, or ensure...
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Next, Ms. April Lee.
Good evening, Chairman Sutton, Dr. Bracy, members of the Board of Education. I'm April Lee, a mother of two current Johnston County Public School students, a classroom teacher in my 20th year of service, and president of the Johnston County Association of Educators. Students and staff members wearing masks is necessary if our goal is to keep our students safe and in school. I don't love wearing masks. I don't love teaching while wearing masks, but I understand that for now, this is what we need to do to keep our kids in school. And I'm just going to say that being in class with my kids face-to-face every day has been such a blessing. It is so different than last year. The relationships that have been built in the last four weeks have re-energized my passion for what I do every day. And the fallacy that I can't emotionally bond with my kids because I'm wearing a mask is a straight-out lie. My kids laugh at the faces I make, and they can't see me from, you know, my nose down. I'm very expressive when I teach. They can see my eyes, they are very insightful, right? These kids know, and they understand, and I just kind of wanted to make that point. Since that point was made, I wanted you to hear it from a practitioner in the classroom who is able to build relationships with their children. Our kids get it. Not many of them complain about wearing a mask, and I don't hear a lot of parents complaining about it either. You know why? Because we are happy to be back in a classroom. That's the bottom line. We are happy to be back, whether we're wearing masks or not right now. We are happy to be back. And while the, sorry, while the masking issue is important, it is even more important for us to focus on the challenges facing our schools and our classrooms. There are 131 certified vacancies, and 233 classified staff vacancies, and bus driver and substitute teacher shortages. Teachers are being asked to cover classes during their plannings on a rotating schedule. Some teachers are giving up their planning period to teach a class in their content area. That would be me, I'm doing that. Teachers are writing lesson plans and designing activities to provide to long-term substitute teachers when we can secure them. Many of them are grading the work given to the substitute teachers, and then entering those grades into power school as well. Instructional assistants are being pulled to sub when a substitute isn't available. Some instructional assistants are writing lesson plans and teaching classes when they are paired in a classroom where a certified teacher is yet to be hired, and you can read that as like in our EC self-contained classes. We've got our TAs doing that job right now.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
We're in trouble, y'all.
Next is Kevin Donovan. Okay, our last one is Camden Holland.
I'm the mother of three school-aged children. I'm a speech therapist and a former EC teacher, and I ask you to please consider the negative impact that mask mandates have. Face masks negatively affect hearing, comprehension, and feelings of connection between listener and speaker. It impacts willingness to engage in conversation, increases anxiety and stress, and creates communication fatigue for both the speaker and the listener. Face masks muffle speech, limit facial expressions, and remove the visual cues from the mouth and lips for speech reading. Children need to see faces. They need to see faces when they're learning in the classroom, when they're receiving speech therapy, and when they're interacting socially with their peers. Nonverbal communication makes up at least 70% of communication, and facial expressions are a crucial part of that. Facial expressions show emotions. I can't imagine a scared kindergartner walking in the first day and not being able to see a reassuring smile. Facial expressions help us determine a speaker's true intention when speaking. Learning to read and react to these cues is an important life skill that children need. How can they learn when all they see are masks seven hours a day, five days a week? Teachers monitor facial expressions of their students to gauge if they're tuned into a lesson, and if they understand the material being presented. Masks muffle speech up to 30%, making understanding of what is being said more difficult. Students are now expected to try to learn new information while also trying to simply decipher what is being said. How long before students just give up? Children need to see faces and to be seen in speech therapy. Examining a child's mouth and observing the way they produce sounds is an important diagnostic tool. Modeling is crucial for learning correct speech production. It's important for teachers to model this in the classrooms, and it's a needed tool in speech therapy to show correct placement of articulators. Speech therapists and teachers use visual cues, facial expressions, and modeling, all to help children become effective communicators. Masks negatively impact this. As recent test scores show, the past 18 months have failed our children educationally. Data shows masks don't work. It's time to do what's right by our kids, and it's time to put parenting back in the hands of parents. Please consider making masks optional. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment for right now. The rest of our public comments will be at the end of our meeting, so we will resume our meeting with Dr. King and his staff.
Board members, our next item is an item for action. It is the Selma Middle School IPG Partner WestEd item. Selma Middle School has been awarded the IPG Grant, that is Innovative Partner Grant. It is a grant provided by the state for schools who are a part of the comprehensive school support and improvement process. Selma's grant award is for a period of three years, and it is a grant of $1.38 million. As a part of the grant, the school is required to identify a technical assistance partner. Tonight, we are announcing that the Selma Middle School staff has identified WestEd as their technical assistance partner. As part of the grant, WestEd will provide services to include conducting baseline needs and assets assessments, providing high-quality instructional professional learning, providing instructional coaching and support, and providing leadership coaching. Again, the grant is $1.38 million. The contract tonight for WestEd that we asked the Board for approval for is for a total of $234,000.
This is an act...
I'm sorry, Mr. Sutton, and that expenditure is covered by the grant.
This isn't...
By the grant, by the IPG Grant.
This is an action item. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Wooten, second by Mr. Byrd. Any questions or comments?
A question. Part of what they were saying is that if we utilize these people, they're pretty much saying we're going to see improvements.
Sir.
Is there a clause in this contract that says if we don't see those improvements, they're going to refund some money?
Not to my knowledge, but again, these are not funds that we are spending from local dollars or from state dollars. The way this process works is the state gives us the money to pay the partner, so it won't be any of our funds that we are expending for that purpose. But I don't believe there is a guarantee of results.
Okay. Do we have information where these folks have been and have seen the results of their collaboration with other systems in terms of what progress was made?
So let me say, I don't have that data in front of me. I know that WestEd is a well-received and well-known educational support program. Unfortunately, Mr. Baker was initially going to be here tonight, so I don't have that level of detail. I certainly will be glad to get that for you, Mr. Carroll, and bring it back to you. But I can tell you that WestEd is a well-received, well-known educational services provider. I don't have that specific data, but I think...
So this is a one-year contract?
I believe so, yes, sir.
All right, so we will know our baseline, and then we can, at the end of this contract year, we will see if there's been any improvement. Is that accurate or fair statement?
That is my belief, and I will confirm that and make sure to get back to you. Yes, Mr. Sue?
It's a three-year contract. It's a three-year contract?
So can I ask, just so I can wrap my head around this, they're bringing in their people to do these things, to provide the services, or...
Yes and no. They will provide the professional development for our staff. They would bring staff in to provide that professional development and provide coaching support, both for teachers and for the administrator.
So you said, like, conducting baseline, so obviously you're going to start with that. But so do they come, is there an instrument that they're using above and beyond, you don't know, above and beyond what we do, or...
They would have different tools than what we have.
Their tools to establish a baseline, okay. Dr. Bracy, are you familiar with WestEd?
WestEd? Heard wonderful things about WestEd, but I wanted to respond to Mr. Carroll. As I look at the contract, it is mutually agreed upon that either party may terminate this contract, giving 30 days notice. So in essence... So in essence, it's a series of one-year contracts from twenty-one to twenty-four. You can get out of it with thirty days' notice. And Mr. Sue has reviewed the contract.
Yeah. Mr. Robinson. And I would note that, um, Mr. Carroll, we are required to have a technical assistance partner. So if we did terminate this contract, we'd have to open that process up again.
In order to continue the grant?
Yes.
Cause obviously this is fulfilling our obligation for the grant.
Well, this is identifying the technical assistance partner again.
Right, that part that we're required to do.
Right.
Okay, that's what I meant.
And I just think, we just need to be aware, they're claiming that they're gonna provide us an avenue to improve. And I, I, what I would say is we need a starting point, and we need to know where we are at the end of that year. And if we don't see much improvement, we need to have a discussion with them.
Absolutely.
We have that option. Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries six, zero.
Thank you, board members. Uh, board members, our next item is the federal programs, uh, local plan for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Uh, this, uh, um, item, board members, represents our reporting to you, um, of our plan to submit applications, uh, for federal dollars. Um, as, as you may know, at this point, the state of North Carolina now requires us to, uh, create a comprehensive plan. Um, that plan, um, includes plans around, uh, Title One Part A, improving the academic achievement of the disadvantaged. Title One Part C, migrant education program. Title Two Part A, preparing, training, and recruiting high-quality teachers and principals. Uh, Title Three, English Language Instruction, PRC one oh four ESL and PRC one eleven immigrant. And Title Four Part A, student support and academic enrichment. Tonight, board members, we are asking for permission, uh, to submit a plan. We will certainly come back to the board and provide specific details about the plan once it has been submitted and approved at the state level.
This is an action item. I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, so move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Andrews, second by Mr. Carroll. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries six, zero.
Thank you, board members. Um, next item is Social Studies Weekly Supplemental Text. Board members, if you, if you remember, the way that we approach social studies, um, in Johnson County Public Schools is that we integrate our social studies work, um, with our English Language Arts, um, reading program. And so rather than teaching those things separately, we bring them together. There's a, a body of research that suggests that that in- implements, I'm sorry, enhances, um, the ability of students to learn social studies, makes their study of social studies more real, particularly allows them to read, um, real social studies information and use that as the process that they also use while they are learning. Um, we have identified, we did go through an RFP process to identify, uh, supplemental text. Um, we've identified the Social Studies Weekly Supplemental Text that we would like to provide for our students in grades K through five. Um, again, uh, we are asking to provide this at a cost of one hundred twenty-seven, uh, thirty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents.
This is an action item. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Ms. Andrews. Any questions or comments?
Um, is there training that needs to be provided for the use of these texts?
There'll be some very minimal training. This is essentially, um, these are just materials that our teachers will use to give our students to read as they work through their, uh, their, their, their reading lessons, right? So rather than just reading, you know, kinda random things, they'll be reading about social studies as they work through their English Language Arts, um, structure.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries six, zero.
Thank you, board members. Um, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two School Improvement Plan Review and Approval. Board members, you have in front of you, um, very large notebooks that include, uh, each school's School Improvement Plan Executive Summary um, and, uh, their plan. Um, our initial plan was to actually offer you these documents, um, and ask you to approve our, um, plans for our, um, low-performing schools. Uh, one of the things that was involved in, uh, Senate Bill six fifty-four was an additional extension of low-performing schools' plans. As you'll remember, last year, you didn't have to improve plans because the plans that were submitted in two thousand nineteen were extended for an additional year. Um, Senate Bill six five four extended that an additional year for this year. So you are not at this point required, uh, to improve school improvement plans for low-performing schools, um, in Johnson County Public Schools. Uh, we did, however, wanna provide those documents for you. You will note that, um, on the board item, there is an actual link, um, and you can use that link to access each of these plans, um, electronically, or of course, those plans are provided for you in, in writing. We would note that while the goals of our schools are not changing, we did, uh, have our schools go in and, uh, revise, uh, the targets of their goal so that they reflect where they are now um, and where they intend to be based on where they are now. So, um, this actually is not an, an, uh, an action item at this point, but it is an opportunity that we wanted to provide for board members to review those plans, um, and have them, um, uh, in, in your possession moving forward.
Can I make a comment? Um, Dr. Bracy, given your goal for our, uh, I'm, I'm thinking, I, I understand what you're saying about, you know, we've sort of been given another year, but obviously we've set some pretty high goals here in Johnson County. So I, what we, and I'll, we will look at this, but is this gonna reflect, or you're charging our schools to reflect your goal as far as our strategic plans to increase reading and math, social studies, and science? Okay. Because that may not have been the, I'm not saying the schools didn't have that in their school improvement plan, but obviously, um, we, uh, we, we have made a commitment to that here in Johnson County.
It, it- Yes. It does. And yes, we have.
I'd argue that's, that's exactly why we asked our schools to, uh, revise their targets, even, even though they were not necessarily revising their actual goals.
And in that, again, that's, that's, that's what I was asking. In that, we're, we're, we're addressing the things we need to address right now.
Absolutely.
To raise proficiency.
This is probably not gonna be a popular question, but, um, why, why are we not gonna have them come and present this to us in person?
Well, board members, again, uh, we can certainly do that at, at your direction. That's, I, I don't mean to suggest that, uh, we could not present them to you. I, I did just mean to suggest that, uh, you, you aren't required by law this year to go through the actual, uh, approval process.
I know we're not required, but I think, you, you know, I think there's value in them telling us what they want to achieve and, and spelling it out and us understanding, where are you now and where do you wanna be?
Yes, sir.
That way, we all understand each other, and I'm sure, I know I will learn a whole lot more if they tell me what's in that than I'm gonna get reading it. So, you know, I don't know what the pleasure of the board is, but I would like to think we could take the time for our low-performance schools to hear this stuff.
Uh, it, it, and as the board directs, we certainly will provide.
I think that's a great idea, Mr. Carroll. Um, and we can certainly discuss a time with Dr. Bracy of, of how we need, if we're gonna hear all fourteen in one evening, or or, or we're gonna split 'em up.
Success, I understand, but I'm telling you, I believe it is well worth the process for everybody. One, it'd be a public session, so the public will hear what is proposed. And plus, we all have a better understanding. When you stand here and tell me what you're gonna do, there's a little more consequence.
Yes, sir.
On the road.
And I would advise, we, we actually have identified and designed a process for that. Um, and so we, you know, again, it will simply be a, an issue of putting it into place. We, we're prepared to do that for you.
We, we just need to, as far as the board is concerned, just give us some parameters. How much time per presentation, things like that? Cause if, if-
What, what kind of time do you think, uh, is a school thirty minutes, is that what?
I, I was gonna say, if it's thirty minutes, you won't hear all fourteen in one night.
I understand that. So I, I'm prepared that we would have three, two, three, or four sessions. And, uh, but, you know, if they're gonna put this much time into an effort to improve their schools, you know, let, let's hear what they got to say so we'll all understand.
So I can sit with Dr. King this week and get out to you by the end of the week, what, a sketch of what that'll look like? Who, who will be presenting with the principal? The amount of time, things like that? If there are any burning questions that the board wants us to tell them to be prepared to answer, we can have that conversation as well.
Sure. All right. And so finally, board members, uh, Dr. Bracy asked me to prepare, um, just a brief presentation about, um, options for quarantined students. I wanna say at the outset, um, of this presentation, these are all just possible solutions to this as an issue. Um, I, we are, I am certainly open, um, and I know that Dr. Bracy is open, um, to hearing your, um, direction um, about how you would like us to move forward in this regard. Uh, so what I've tried to do is put together a presentation you will find today that I am gonna present to you, four options. And I wanna be very clear that there, there is certainly no limit. Um, I don't mean to suggest that these are the only four options, either just the four that we are suggesting. Um, um, there is no rule that says, uh, you have to select any of these objects, any of these options, any one of these options. You could select two of the four, or one of the four, um, or tell us to go back to the drawing board, um, altogether. The structure of this presentation is that we are, I will present each option. I will share with you what I believe are the advantages of using that as an option. I'll also share with you, um, what I would call the shortfalls of using that option. And finally, I'll share with you just very briefly the financial implications of each particular option, all right? And let me just back up and say this again. Uh, this is not remote learning, per se, and this is not virtual learning, per se. These are options for how we would provide instruction and academic support for students who are on quarantine. Okay, so students who are quarantined. The first option is, uh, allowing students to use paper packets and access to content through learning management systems. Um, board members, you may have heard probably two and a half, three weeks ago, we advised all of our schools, um, to make sure, um, that they had all of their teachers update their learning management systems and make sure that all of their students knew how to access, uh, their learning management systems that each classroom teacher, um, uh, is using for their classrooms. Uh, this year in Johnson County Public Schools, we have two learning management sen- systems that our teachers may choose from. Um, most of our teachers, the overwhelming majority of our teachers, use, uh, a system called Canvas. Um, other teachers use, um, a system called Google Classroom. Uh, but regardless of that, they were all asked to update those, um, and to make sure that all of their students knew and understood how to access the material that is there. As you know, paper packets are about as old as, uh, as, uh, as, as, as in instructional practice as, as anything. That is, teachers simply putting together a packet of materials to give students while they're gonna be out for a period of time. So option one, obviously, is that students can use paper packets or access content through their teacher's learning management system. In this option, students will be provided with paper packets, um, they'll be able to access content through their teacher's updated, um, learning management system. What are the advantages to this? First, this is our current practice. This is what we have directed our schools to do, um, at this moment, um, and what schools are generally doing. Um, it does not require, other than the production of the packets, additional work for our teachers. Um, students can receive a packet for any class, uh, that they are enrolled in. Um, students and their families get to determine their degree of engagement. As you can imagine, students who are home, um, on quarantine may be in different states as it relates to their own medical condition. There certainly may be some who, um, aren't in a position to do academic work, um, you know, either physically or emotional, or whatever have you. But doing this, uh, using this, um, option allows parents to decide how much they want their kids to engage with learning um, and how much they want them to step back from that. Um, allow students to earn a one R attendance designation. A one R attendance designation means that in terms of, um, a child's attendance designation for each school day, they can be, um, marked as, uh, remote learning, which means they are essentially marked present for school while they are quarantined. Students also have the option right now of receiving a one D, um, um, attendance designation. That simply means they are absent. The shortfalls to this, uh, to this option, obviously, is that students don't benefit from live instruction, and students certainly may find themselves in a position to have to, uh, catch up when they return to school. Uh, the financial implications for this are, is none. Um, uh, basically, again, it's what we're doing now. It won't require additional teaching. It won't require us to compensate anybody in any additional way. Option two is all teachers, uh, return to two-way teaching. By two-way teaching, what I refer to is what we basically did last year. Um, and that means that teachers would, teachers would both be required to both, uh, teach the students who are physically in their classroom as well as, uh, teach students who are accessing their classroom, um, remotely, okay? So that is what we mean by two-way teaching. The advantages to this, um, it is something that we have done before, so schools could restart this practice almost immediately. Um, students benefit from live instruction while out on quarantine in this option. Um, students who complete their assignments are less likely to fall behind in this option. The shortfalls is that teachers will experience the burden of two-way teaching. I know you, board members, heard a lot from teachers about how difficult and challenging that was, and, uh, we certainly recognize that to be the case. Um, teachers' attention within the classroom, uh, would have to be split because teachers would be responsible for providing instruction, uh, to both students who are in the classroom and those who are, um, chiming in, um, remotely. Um, and the final shortfall is that this is obviously not a particularly, uh, popular option for classroom teachers. Uh, once again, in terms of financial, um, implications, um, there are likely no implications financially because, again, it's something that we've done before. Uh, we could simply just kinda ratchet, uh, that machine, if you will, up again. Uh, there, there may be a few, uh, students who we would need to provide some, um, technological support, uh, but for the most part, it won't require us to spend any significant amounts of money, additional money. Option three, um, is to create a quarantine teacher cadre. In this option, CIA would recruit and identify a cadre of teachers, as many as three to five per grade level or core course, um, who are interested in teaching two ways, and then compensate them to do so. Um, students who are quarantined would be provided a link to join live classes of these teachers. The advantages of, uh, this, uh, option would be that students will again benefit from live instruction. Um, again, students who complete their assignments, uh, would be less likely to fall behind. And, uh, only teachers who are interested in two-way teaching would be asked to teach two ways. Essentially, those folks would, uh, volunteer to be a part of, of the process. Shortfalls, while this is live instruction, it would not be necessarily with the child's classroom teacher. So in other words, what we would do is we'd maybe identify five fifth-grade, um, English ELA teachers and, and advise parents of when they could log in, uh, to see a live English Language Arts, uh, class, right? So it would not necessarily be your teacher, but it would be a teacher who is teaching English Language Arts based on our pacing, um, and based on our English Language Arts, um, curriculum. Um, this, uh, another shortfall is that, uh, it would only include core courses. We don't feel like it would be possible for us, either from a financial perspective, or frankly, from a logistical perspective, to offer this option for every single class. Um, and then, um, probably the most significant one, um, is that it will require some lead team as we would have to identify teachers and create schedules and, uh, communicate those, um, to principals who would then share them, um, with students who go out, um, on quarantine. Uh, financial implications, obviously, teachers who agree to participate will require, uh, compensation. I can tell you that, um, I've shared these ideas, um, with Mr. Britt, and Mr. Britt is, uh, clear that this is, uh, the kind of activity that we could very much use, um, ESAR funds to fund. So we certainly would be able to fund it through ESAR, and there are funds available, uh, to do this if we would so, uh, desire. Option four. Option four is to create a library of recorded lessons. In this option, CIA would again recruit and identify teachers who are interested, this time in recording live lessons, and compensate them to do so. Students who are quarantined would be provided a link to access those recorded lessons. They could access those lessons, you know, at home, with their parents, on their own time. The advantage is here is that students, of course, would benefit from high-quality- would benefit from high-quality instruction. Again, that's high-quality instruction as opposed to live instruction. And the reason why I would suggest that it would be high-quality instruction is that we could certainly, we would be in a position to choose the teachers who participated in this process. And so obviously, we would be looking for those folks who do a really good job so that we could, you know, suggest that there would be a level of quality of the recorded lessons that are there. Again, a second item, second advantage is that families would be allowed to manage their students' access to instruction based on their medical needs, again, as we talked about in one of the options before. I think this is a real opportunity here because as a student begins, if, for instance, a student was sick or not feeling well towards the beginning of their quarantine and decided that, you know, over time, they begin to feel a little stronger, they could then access those lessons and use them as necessary in that regard. Shortfalls, again, students won't benefit from live lessons. Again, it would only include core courses, so math, science, social studies, and science. And again, will require some lead time to identify teachers and begin to create and, to create and store those lessons in a format that they could be accessed. And then finally, financial implications for this option. Again, teachers who agree to participate will require compensation. There may be some limited need for us to do some things on the technical end that could possibly have a cost, but that is relatively unlikely. So board members, those are the four options that my team and I have developed. We will be glad, I'd be glad to answer your questions. In fact, I invite your questions and your ideas about what you think about these options, which ones you would be interested in us pursuing further, changes you might suggest to any of these options.
Dr. King, all these compensation requirements for these options, we could use ESAR funds because of quarantine, right?
All right, let's start at the top.
Yes, sir.
Paper packets. I understand that we started out with paper packets, but I got feedback from parents that said it wasn't the current material that the teacher was teaching. Mostly busy work.
And I'd be, I'd be honest with you. That is, that is a shortfall usually of paper packets because you usually don't ask teachers to make a paper packet every week or every two weeks. You generally make a packet and you use that packet for, you know, some time. You know, I think what we could do to address that, if we wanted to remain with that option, is we might, you know, look at a process where we asked our principals, you know, to provide a little bit more oversight as it relates to those packets and so we could address it in that way. But I would want to be clear, you know, I don't know how. In fact, I know having, kind of having the overseas processes like that before. I don't think it's possible to make sure that those packets are going to always be up-to-date, current. There will be some, there'll be some lag.
That'll be a big burden on every teacher.
Yes, sir.
If I, sorry, I'll just go down. The two-way teaching, now, I'm assuming, we had a conversation earlier that we're putting Chromebooks in every student's hand. And this would be somewhat similar to what we did last year with virtual learning, but it would, it wouldn't be the teacher sitting in front of that computer, but at least the computer would be facing the teacher as he or she is teaching, and the kid, the student, would be able to participate in a live class with whatever they're teaching and also communicate back and forth. Is that right?
So I would be comfortable suggesting that the teacher, student would be able to observe a live class. I think we would have to think through the notion of participating in a live class. That would make it a bit more complicated. I certainly would not say that that was off the, off the, off the table, but I think we'd have to do some more thinking about how that would work logistically. But certainly, we would say that students would be able to observe a live lesson, receive assignments, and follow those live lessons through that process.
But they would be able to follow along with their material that they have as if they were in a classroom as the teacher is teaching that material to the students that are there?
That's the idea. Yes, sir.
All right, but that, would that student also be able to ask a question?
I would imagine that through whatever technological, remote process portal they were using, I'm assuming we would use Google Meet as we've, in most instances, yes, sir, through the, certainly through the chat feature.
And the teacher cadre, with our shortage that we're already facing right now, that may be a big, steep hill to climb?
Well, I think there's, I think that's a reasonable concern. Yes, sir, it could be difficult. But I think, you know, we are, you know, the benefit would be, if you, if you think about it, I don't know how many third-grade teachers we have in Johnson County schools. I'd imagine somewhere in the neighborhood of, I don't know, 150, 160. We'd just be looking for three people, or between three and five people. So it might be a challenge, but I would imagine we'd be able to get the number of people that we need to make that happen, you know, if we were looking at the cadre piece. Yes, sir.
Even with that, there's only still going to be your math, science, social studies, so still those four courses?
Yes, sir.
We go with options two and three and four?
Right, and that's, that's kind of what I'm projecting now. I think as, you know, if this is something that we got into and we went through, as we got into it and figured out some of the kinks in the core courses and we figured out a way to expand to others, we might be in a good place. But the reason I would say that is, if you think about it, and you think about Mr. Carroll's point, so we might have 150 third-grade teachers, right? So the notion of finding three to five third-grade teachers is a whole lot different than finding three to five US history teachers. Because while there are 130 or 140 third-grade teachers, there may only be 40 US history teachers, or may only be 30 US history teachers. So the universe of people who could actually do the work in terms of being in the cadre shrinks significantly. And Mr. Carroll, I see your mind working. Social studies would, US history would be a part of core courses. I just threw that one out as the, as the one that I was speaking of. But as we get to specialized courses, again, that universe of available teachers shrinks and shrinks and shrinks. And so when we get to courses like CTE courses specifically, there may only be, you know, seven teachers who teach a particular content area in CTE across the entire district. So if we're talking about finding three of them, that means we got to find, you know, half of the folks who are, who are doing it, who would be willing to do that. That's the reason why we're suggesting it probably is going to make the most sense for us to focus this on core subjects.
Is, and forgive me for asking this, but we've ever used this word cadre, but is there a cadre of virtual teachers who may not be employed with this district that maybe we could pull on a contractual basis? Or the group, I believe, is it Adminium?
Yeah, I would suggest to you, sir, that if you have a, if you know someone who has a cadre of teachers that we could contract with virtually, you would be a rich man at this, at this moment. I have to tell you, I know that Mr. Vitrono would probably tell you, certainly Dr. Bracy would tell you, we've, we've kind of beat that horse almost to death. There are just not available teachers out there. I think we reached out to a couple of agencies that generally are able to do that for us, and they, and we found that they are in the same place that everybody else is at this time. There's just not a pool of folks out there that are available.
Anything we could do with the Virtual Academy company that we contract? Was it Adminium? Am I saying that right?
Admentum.
Admentum, I apologize. Is there anything that we could do with them to maybe foster some of this cadre? I'm going to say that word one more time.
We could, we could certainly inquire. But the difference would be, we would be contracting with a service provider, right? To provide a service, right? So if we're looking at our teachers and creating a cadre within the context of our teachers, we would just be in a position to have to compensate our teachers. If we contract with the service provider like Admentum, you know, they're going to charge us what they charge us. And I would argue that the difference in the cost would be relatively significant.
Absolutely. Our teachers first. If they want the extra money or they want to do something like that, please, by all means. But if there is a shortage and there is an asset out there with Admentum, I'm sorry, I'm saying it wrong again. But if there is a way, can we use those ESAR funds for that contract or for that company?
I could, I would imagine that we would, we could use ESAR funds if that was something that we could work out with Admentum. There would be a couple of other slight pullbacks. Number one is Admentum does not necessarily use our pacing. So that would create an additional barrier, not insurmountable. And they do not necessarily use our curriculum materials.
Well, the pacing, but the pacing's going to be off with option one anyway, as he discussed, because of the packets and stuff. So, yeah, if we could look into that, that'd be great. But I love the four options. I'm not, I'm not trashing on that. But the four options are great. It gives people exactly what they're indicated in the nomenclature options. So thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dr. King and Mr. Carroll, we were talking in our finance committee meeting about the use of, of course, we want our teachers to have the opportunity first, but the use of retired schoolteachers for opportunities that would, that could fill the slots for this, these four options. And I still don't understand the need to force our retired, recently-retired teachers to sit out six months. And when we're in a crisis of finding quality teachers to help quarantine students, and another reason we need to contact our legislator about penalizing our quality teachers that have retired, that need to be on the platform right now, teaching students. So I just felt like I needed to say that.
Yeah, and I think we all had a discussion too that a retired teacher is actually a less expensive employee for us because we don't have benefits that we have to pay, and you're hiring an experienced person without the additional costs. So that's a good point. May I ask this question?
Yes, sir.
Two-way teaching, what is it about that that the teachers maybe do not like?
I think, so I'm speculating, Mr. Carroll. I think one of the issues for teachers is the, the splitting of their attention. Frankly, their inability to manage the engagement of students who are on the other side of the computer. And some of the comments I've heard is that because of those two issues, teachers have felt like that it was less, less productive and, and less productive in addition to being more physically and emotionally draining for classroom teachers. Those are some of the comments that I've heard. I want to be clear that I've never been in a position to have to do that. And so I could only share what I've heard.
Almost like double the work, you know?
Dr. King, probably, as we have this discussion tonight, it, wouldn't the volume be a little less just doing quarantines than it was? Excuse me, than it was when we were split?
Certainly.
Last year?
Certainly.
So I wonder, and we won't know until we have conversations with teachers and principals.
I mean, you'll have, yeah, you may have a teacher that has one student.
Correct.
That's out on quarantine.
Versus last year, half her class, correct.
Right, so I think that's worth, I'm sitting here thinking because I really like the options that you've given us, but hope and pray that we are not talking about the magnitude, the volume of kids. I mean, many, some teachers won't have anybody.
Right.
Or they may have one child, or they may have two children, which is very different, you know, in trying to meet their needs.
Absolutely.
So if, okay. So if we're just talking about alignment and engagement, probably option two is cleaner in that way? I don't want to.
Option one is, is the cleanest?
Cleanest, yeah.
Option two is the next cleanest? Options three and four are quite dirty, if you will. Yes, sir.
But as far as just educational alignment, probably two-way teaching.
Two-way teaching because it, you know, it maintains the connection. You know, one of the things that I didn't mention, you know, both with the recorded lessons and the cadre issue would be, you know, what you do with the work that the student submits during that process, that, you know, who do you give it to, who do you send it to? So there, there are some pieces that will make it quite complicated and convoluted, if you will, that two-way teaching certainly does not have to deal with.
I don't know if this, and Stephen's not in here, but it, and probably those teachers that are doing two-way teaching or that will potentially do two-way teaching, I wonder, is it a way we can compensate them for working with students? Because if you're doing that two-way teaching, you're going to lose some time. You could have been doing something else in the classroom, Stephen, as Stephen walks in. So Stephen, what I'm saying, and you and I haven't talked about this, this is fresh out of my mind. Couldn't we compensate those teachers who are having to do this with some possibly, possibly some virtual office hours after school?
Yes, yes, sir. Was your kid, actually, Ms. Millsato and I were just talking about that in the hallway as, as this was being discussed here, and that we could provide a, we could build that into the plan and have an extra responsibility stipend for teachers to do that.
Because we, we, listen, we love our teachers, and we saw what they did last school year. And as Ms. Stevenson just presented to us, we've closed the gap on the state, and the gap is not what it used to be. And we've made progress. We didn't lose as much as some people did, is what I'm trying to say. So if we could sit down and figure out a way to pay them for office hours, those, and I, and Stephen, I'm brilliant, you can do this. If you are working with students that are quarantined, how can we compensate you? Because you're going to have to communicate with those families after hours. You're going to be sending emails and following up with what they're doing. If we can figure out how to do that via virtual office hours, I'd love to, for us to be able to figure it out, you, Dr. King, myself, whomever else you deem need to be there.
Yes, sir. I think it's very doable. Yes, sir.
And I'd like to go.
I'd just like to say, I agree. The two-way teaching last year was, was a tremendous burden on all of our teachers. But the, the amount of students they're going to have this year obviously is going to be a lot less. But you mentioned something, Dr. King, that we need to keep in mind, and that is basically the kids that may be sick in those first three to four days when they're at home and cannot get on these two-way teaching opportunities. Maybe it's a way we can do a hybrid and do some of these recorded lessons that the teacher is, if she's doing a two-way teaching, they can record that lesson so when that student feels well enough, they can go back and watch that lesson over again. And if they need a further assistance, they can reach out to that teacher, like Dr. Bracy was talking about, in a virtual office setting.
Sure.
Yeah, that wouldn't be a bad, I'm just making the suggestion, but you know, always a library of lessons is a great tool. It's a great tool for a lot of reasons in a school district, but that's possible.
There was a high school that did that. I can't remember which one, but there was one high school in the district.
Yeah, it's done in other places where you go ahead and record the lesson that you taught. You document it as what this strategy was, this objective was on this thing, and you store it, and there it is, you know. But that's something to work for. But like you said, it's like you said, that takes a little time to do that.
I appreciate the options because we all have heard it from parents about the packets and so forth, and the kids wanting to do more and wanting to be more involved when they're at home. We've even received emails from some of these students that are proactively thinking about, I want to keep up with my classes while I'm at home, but unfortunately, they don't have that opportunity. So I appreciate you all providing these options.
But the compensation option is just as important as well.
Absolutely.
And I would like to say that we, we hope, and we don't believe, this is going to go on forever. And so I think, you know, a nice, clean, quick option that if we can get ourselves, you know, another month or two through this, it may be all unnecessary. That's what we can hope. And so it's not something that's going to be a forever thing. As the data gets better and we look each month at how trending is going, you know, we may be able to not have to worry with it at all.
I would like to say too, I know we're talking about teachers that, compensating these teachers in these extra roles, but we have a lot of teacher assistants that do some of this work as well, that I would like to, you know, add those into the mix as far as being compensated if they're doing some of that work that the teacher would be doing.
Yes, if I understand, are being pulled to cover classes. We need to be compensating them if we can for that.
We're going to sit and see if we can figure this out. We don't have the compensation part of it figured out just yet. But as Mr. Britt likes to say, this is what ESAR was created for, COVID-related expenses. So we're going to have that conversation tomorrow.
Thank you, Dr. King.
Thank you, Dr. King.
Mr. Moore.
Good evening, Board, Board members, Dr. Bracy, Mr. Sue. Tonight, I have two items for approval for you. Agenda, item one is the bleacher replacement and repairs project. The home bleachers for the football field at both Princeton, Middle High, and South Johnston High are in need of replacement. It is not feasible to make repairs to, to, to those. Also, the visitor bleachers at Princeton, Middle High, and the home bleachers at Smithfield-Salma High will also receive required ADA access upgrades and seating additions along with sandblasts and paint repairs to the existing framing structure. RFP was advertised, a pre-bid was held on August 9th. Three bids were received on September 7th with muter construction providing the low bid of $995,000. The bid tab is linked. Recommendation is for the Johnson County Board of Education to award a contract with muter construction for the con, for the contract amount. This is, this will be funded from our capital outlay budget, and this is for action.
This is an action item. I'll entertain a motion.
To move.
Motion by Mr. Wooton.
Second.
Second by Ms. Andrews. Any questions or comments?
I do have a question. Could you tell me like the life expectancy on those bleachers?
Great question. They are, well, the new, new ones are aluminum framing, so they are 30 to 40 years. The current ones are steel with lead-based paint on them, which averages about 20 years, and they're way, way past that life cycle.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments?
All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries six, zero.
My second item is for the surplus and sale of school property near East Clayton Elementary School. The Johnston County Parks and Open Space Department has offered to purchase the parcel, 16K05012F, a 2.84 acre vacant property adjacent to East Clayton Elementary for the market value of $34,080. The property is, is located across Castleberry Road from the school and is in a flood zone next to the Neuse River. The purchase price is believed to be reasonable and fair since, since the county is purchasing the property, the school system does not have to separately offer it to the county before disposing of it. And the administration has reviewed the request and concluded that the property is not needed for public, public school purposes. The disposal of the property should not have an adverse impact on the current or future use of the East Clayton Elementary School site. Recommendation is for the Johnson County Board of Education, one, to declare the property surplus and no longer needed for public school purposes, and two, to approve the sale of the property to Johnson County. The proceeds from the sale will go into our capital outlay budget. This is presented for action.
Motion by Mr. Carroll, second by Mr. Wooton. Any questions or comments?
Is the price of the land based on, I, I don't know much about land, but it's because it's in a flood zone is the reduction of price?
I've walked a property unless you've got boots in a canoe.
That's, that's fine. I just know property goes a little higher than that out there, but yeah.
It, it does, and, and so the county, the county, I hope, if I can say, say this, but, but the county plans, plans to put canoe access in the parking lot. You can't put anything else on it, honestly, like Mr. Minister Wooton said, so.
All right, any other questions?
All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries six, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Frattono.
Mr. Chairman, good evening again. I have one item. It is an action item. Exhibit eight D1, Superintendent Recommendations. There are three documents, I believe Ms. Jackson, are linked to the agenda under this area for your consideration. The first page are administrative recommendations. And then pages two and three are facility services recommendations and financial services recommendations. And as we've discussed, even prior to the pandemic, we continue to look at our salaries across the district, and we have worked to try to be very competitive. And these are some of the steps that we're taking to help, especially on the classified side, to get some of our positions to be competitive with other LEAs and organizations. So these recommendations are before you for your consideration.
This is an action item. I'll entertain a motion.
I move.
Motion by Ms. Andrews, second by Mr. Johnson. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries six, zero. Thank you, Mr. Frattono.
Thank you.
Mr. Britt.
How long is he going to be? Oh, you're going to be about?
Probably about 45 minutes.
Let's take a break, five-minute break.[1000.44]
The floor is yours.
Good evening, Board members, Dr. Bracy. Presented for your consideration tonight is our ESER Plan. So, this is a very detailed presentation. But by the time we leave here tonight, hopefully everyone will have a really good understanding of how we're spending all this federal money that we keep speaking about over the last several months. So, with me tonight is Ms. Anna Milizato. She has recently joined the Finance Department as our ESER Administrator. She has more, a little about her background, for those who don't know her. She has more than 20 years' experience, classroom teaching experience. She also served with nine of those years at Forks Elementary. And most recently, she was our Federal Programs Director. And now she's joined us in Finance to help guide us along this process. So, of course, we start out, every Finance meeting is talking about our, about our academic goal. Because what we're, the plan for our ESER Funds is to get us to that goal. It serves several purposes, but not the least of which to help give us a vehicle to get there. So, our goal, just so to repeat what everybody already knows. By the end of the 23-24 school year, 100% of Johnston County Public Schools will earn a letter grade of A, B, or C. So, our topic today is to cover the blueprint. That's the blueprint of how to get to our goal. The very first thing we're going to do is give you an overview of our ESER budget, or what our plan is. We're going to go over a little bit about what our topics are, or what our individual components of this plan is. And then we'll dive a little bit deeper and present our ESER III Plan for approval. So, what are we talking about? Well, we're talking about spending $104 million. And I bring that up because, you know, this, hopefully by the time we leave here today, everyone will have a good understanding of what that $104 million is going towards. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Milizato.
Good evening, Chairman Sutton, Board members, Dr. Bracy. So, $104 million, that calls our attention, doesn't it? And we hear all the time, "ESER Funds." So, it looks like it's just a big pile of money, so great. But we want to give a better understanding of what ESER Plans means. So, ESER, the first time, was the CARES Act. And that was for relief. So, that was the emergency fund that came in March 20, right after we stopped, all the schools closed in March 13 of 2020. Then after that, in December, came the ESER II. So, ESER I is also called CARES Act. ESER II is the Response and Relief. So, after we calmed down a little bit, so how can we continue helping all the disturbances caused by COVID-19? And then ESER III came in March of 2021, and that is the American Rescue Plan. So, when we hear ESER Funds, it's incorporating all the three of them. So, we're dividing ESER I, ESER II, and ESER III. And when we are talking budgets, then we can look the difference on that. All the PRCs, the report codes, from budgets of ESER I CARES Act are on the 160. So, 163 to 170 are related to ESER I CARES Act. That was the first part. Then, from 171 to 179 is the part of ESER II. This, sure. That is the second part that came in December. And then, we start with 181, and we go to 189. But here's the thing, some of the funds are not yet public. So, DPI is still working in how they're going to distribute the funds, and in some of the guidelines for those funds. One example is, that we have in there, Funds 185 to 189 is still to be determined. So, the $104 million does not include what we will still receive when they start this distribution. Also, in the middle of the CARES Act, also, the first one, also included the GEAR Act, which was distributed to governors to measure the needs of their state and distribute with more flexibility. That's our 169 and 170. I hope that gives a little bit of understanding on when we are talking ESER and $104 million, that it's not the same thing. Now, I always talk about that in federal funds, and if you work on federal funds, you know that. Federal is the icing of the cake, okay? We need local funds, and we need state funds to cover the basic needs of education. So, if you think of a pound cake, whatever you use there, that's what you need from local funds and state funds, okay? So, I would not buy eggs with federal funds, because that's my obligation to have the eggs when I'm making the cake, when I'm baking the cake. But I can buy the icing with federal funds. And that works with any kind of federal funds. One example, I cannot buy a simple desk with Title I Funds, because the district is responsible to offer all the desks for our students. However, I could buy innovative furniture that will promote something in flexible group for our students, because that is in addition to what I offer. Does that make sense? So, speaking of ice of the cake, ESER Funds is the icing of the cake when it's related to COVID. So, everything about ESER has to be related to COVID-19. So, it is to prevent the disease, to reduce the transmission, and to recover from COVID. So, every time we write a grant, we have to make sure that what we are proposing, what we are sending to North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, is connected with one of those three forms. So, let's talk about the plan. This is all collaboration. So, we had to make sure, and we wanted to make sure, that we were collaborating with all the departments, all the stakeholders. So, we presented a template to Cabinet, and every Cabinet member took back to their departments to get the feedback of what we needed. That was reviewed, oh, then, also the Cabinet members took to schools and all their departments to look at ideas. And all those ideas and plans were reviewed, discussed, and approved by Cabinet. Nothing that you're going to see tonight was not reviewed, discussed by Cabinet. Then, we are in this phase, we need to present to you for your approval. And after you approve, we're going to submit the application for DPI. So, probably tomorrow, if everything is okay with our budget, that you approve everything, we'll submit the budget to DPI. It takes 48 hours to upload in our system, and by Monday, we should be able to submit the application. Then, we're going to raise all stakeholders' awareness. This plan will be in the Finance Department website with a link that people can look at and give their feedback. Then, we're going to monitor the results and maintain the compliance. After that, we're going to continue getting stakeholders' feedback, modify the plan as needed, because there is some flexibility in the ESER Plans. We have until 2024 to revise our plans. And today, one of the examples that you just discussed with the CIA was that. So, we see all their needs to provide remote learning, and we are looking into add more funds to our teachers. And that's, the circle continues. We monitor, and we go back and discuss, and it has to be approved by Cabinet. And when needed, we'll bring it back to the Board.
So, everything Ms. Milizato just mentioned was just to develop the plan. So, that plan has to be developed by the school, every school district in the state, and not just every school district in the state, but every school district in the nation is doing exactly what we're doing here today. They're developing that plan, figuring out what's the best way to move forward for their individual districts. So, now that we've got, we've got a plan that's being presented for you tonight, then, once that gets approved, and it gets approved by DPI, just like Ms. Milizato said, then we have the authorization to spend. So, how do we ensure that the money is being spent on exactly what was approved in the plan? Well, here's the steps, here's the process. So, first, the funds are budgeted, then it's sent to the schools and departments. Then, the schools and departments submit timesheets and purchase orders to Finance to request to spend the funds. And every one of those purchase orders is reviewed by Ms. Milizato and our purchasing accountant in Finance. And so, for payroll, it goes through payroll to be reviewed, and again, this Ms. Milizato. So, then, we have a very unusual thing that most people outside of school districts find this a very odd thing to say. Then, we request the cash. So, what do we mean by requesting the cash? Well, it means that we don't have $104 million sitting in our bank right now. So, when we talk about how much money that we have to spend, or how much money do we have right now, well, we don't have any of it, as far as what's cash in the bank that's available to spend. We have to submit, once we have this plan and go through all these steps that Ms. Milizato mentioned, then we submit a request to DPI to draw down cash. And so, we are allowed to draw down the amount of cash for the checks that we've just written, or the payroll that has just been processed. And then, when that cash does come to us, we have three days to liquidate it. So, that, so you don't get to hold on to the cash, you don't get to hold on to federal dollars. So, that's one thing that, just to make sure that everybody understands, we don't have, you know, $100 million in the bank today, just waiting to be spent. That's not, that's not true. So, then, we give the Board budget updates. So, you get a monthly budget update of what we've spent, and how much is left. And then, we'll post this monthly to our Finance webpage. Then, we have external audits. So, you kind of see the pattern here, there's a lot of reviews, there's a lot of audits, and we're just really getting started here. So, then, we have our external auditors that come and present to the Board once a year. They do a compliance audit, and then, the results of that audit gets reported in our financial statements, that gets in turn reported to the Board, gets reported to the State Treasurer's Office, and it'll be posted on our webpage. So, if you go look at any financial statement from Johnston County Public Schools, you flip to the back, you'll see where our federal programs have been reviewed, and there's a compliance section in the back of every set of financials. And then, as if that wasn't enough, we have our DPI audit, so Department of Public Instruction. So, they do another compliance audit, and they dive deeper. They'll do school visits, they'll look into our paperwork that we've collected, to make sure that we've checked all the boxes and jumped through all the hoops to make, to ensure that the money that we have spent is in compliance with what the federal government says that we can spend it on. So, I'm talking about a lot of hoops, and there is. There's a tremendous amount of hoops that we have to jump through for federal programs. And that's for a reason, it's for internal controls. It's because it's $100 million that we're talking about. And so, the federal government doesn't take that lightly. They want to make sure that every school district is following the rules and spending it wisely, and have processes in place. Because you see Uncle Sam there, that has a little guy that's flipped upside down and money coming out. If we, what happens if we get this wrong? So, if we don't, if we make a mistake somewhere in this process, what happens if we misspend money? Well, we pay it back to Uncle Sam. And that's Uncle Sam, if you see the little picture there, he's got Johnston County flipped upside down, and he's shaking money out of his pockets. I don't know about you, but I don't have $100 million in the bank to pay if we don't do this correctly. Yeah, you can shake a lot. Yes, ma'am.
Back it one slide, because don't we, don't we have to have, don't, when we request the money from DPI, there's no checks and balances as to whether or not the federal government approves of what we're requesting, because that seems to come at the audit.
Yeah, so, the-
Is that right?
When we request the money from DPI, DPI's already approved the plan, and then, we've submitted a budget that they also go through and verify and check the chart of accounts, so our general ledger codes that we have. And they cross-reference all that against our plan, and then against our spending. So, all of that gets checked in this, in this process.
So, there should be no problem with the federal government, after it's all said and done, that we've done something we weren't supposed to do?
Right, so, one way that, one way that a school district can get in trouble would be to, let's say, let's say the school board decides to pay all teachers a bonus, and the state has already paid bonuses to employees over the summertime. So, you think that should be an allowable expense. Well, if you didn't verify that and check with DPI that the bonus that we want to pay is in compliance with the, you know, CFR 200 dot whatever, 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 there's a whole section of code of federal regulations that we have to comply with. If there's some regulation that we did not, we didn't, there's a box that wasn't checked whenever we paid that bonus, we could end up having to pay that bonus back, or that amount that was spent for that bonus, back to the federal government. If you recall, back in December, when we had that very, December of last year, we paid that $400 stipend to all our teachers. Well, we went back and forth with DPI to get that wording correctly, so that we had all our boxes checked, and we knew that it was going to withstand an audit, and it did. It was reviewed by DPI after the fact, and everything cleared.
At some point in time, are we floating money at some point in time?
No, sir.
But never-
No, sir, we time it in Finance, so, we, when we are working through, say, let's say we have a scheduled pay date of September 28th this month. So, we'll time it so that a couple of days ahead of time, that cash will hit for it. And so, you just kind of, you know, you work backwards from the pay date and determine when you, when do you need the cash, when you need it to hit the bank, and stay within that three-day rule.
So, while we're asking questions, have we ever had to pay anything back to your acknowledgements? So, you're batting a thousand, as they say, Ms. Milizato, great job. And when we talk about, we don't have the money on hand, I'm aware of that, has there ever been a case where, you know, if we don't have it, we don't have it? Have we ever been promised or allocated an amount of funding, and that be reduced? Or is the federal government always good for it?
So, in some cases, you get a planning allotment from DPI and the federal government that says, "This is what we are expecting you to receive this year." And we've had, we've had cases in the past, although not with ESER. We've had cases in the past with federal funds where that planning allotment was greater than the actual allotment that came through for that year. So, there is some variation from-
I'm hopeful it's some very minute variation, and it would obviously come out of local funds at that point, correct, if we've already been committed to the purchase, or whatever it is we're spending the money on?
We try to, we try to be conservative. Whenever we do our plans and build a budget, we're always, we're always taking that into consideration, that there's going to be things that's not going to go our way, or that's going to surprise us.
Very good, well, with Ms. Milizato, batting a thousand, we don't need to ask any more questions?
That's why we stole her away from federal programs to help us with ESER. So, great question. So, that's, that's the hoops that we have to jump through, that's why, because we want to make sure that we're in compliance, and that we are not misspending any funds at all. We have to have strong internal controls to do that, and that while there are a lot of hoops to jump through, there is a lot of paperwork to do for this. We try to insulate the schools, so the schools don't have to, you know, you might wonder, like, how much money is getting allocated to a specific school, or how much do they have to work with? We have it allocated in that way at Johnston. And the reason we haven't done that is because if we do, then we've got to educate all the schools and all the teachers on what is allowable and what's not allowable, for them to be able to know how to build their plans around that. So, what we've done here is to say, "Well, route your request up the chain of command." You know, if you've got an idea, and you'll see some of the ideas that has been presented and is in our plan here tonight, you know, route your chain, route your request through your school improvement team, through your principal, you know, to make sure that the plans at every school is aligned with what that principal and what that school improvement team's needs are, or plans are. And then, that comes through Cabinet, which is kind of, is a little bit like Shark Tank, you pitch the idea, and 99% of the time, it's a doable expense. But we will handle the hoops on the finance side to try to make it as easy as possible for the schools. Because as those schools that are Title I funded know, there's, it's challenging. It's challenging to work with federal funds. And that's not to knock federal funds, it's just, when you look at a different funding source, federal is the most difficult to comply with. Then underneath that, you have state funds, and then the easiest to comply with is county funds, as far as the difficulty. So, that's why we've set it up the way we have. And continue to send us ideas, just like we've done here tonight with Cabinet, because we can build that into our request and our communication with DPI. So, Ms. Milizato showed you a lot of the PRCs and the programs that we have. This is an update of what we've spent so far, year-to-date. So, if you look on the left, you see PRC, which is Program Report Code, or the program from DPI. And then, you've got the description of what that program is for, and that definition is from the Department of Public Instruction. Then, you have the budget that was allocated to us, the expenditures year-to-date, the amount that's remaining, and then, when that funding source expires. So, you can see, there's different expiration dates throughout the year, or throughout the life of this program. We've got some that will end in about a year from today, you've got some that will end two years from today, and then, finally, the largest pot of money ends about three years from this month. So, if you notice, if you remember when Ms. Milizato was presenting, we don't have all of the pots of money yet. This list is a lot smaller than the list that Ms. Milizato showed earlier, because there's still money that's not, that hasn't been approved by DPI, or hasn't been allotted to us at this time. So, what about our purposes? What are we spending that $104 million on? The real, the $104 million question tonight is what we're getting to now. So, we'll break it down into a pie chart. So, the largest pot of money, or the largest amount that we're spending, is for learning loss. And we'll go into a little bit more detail about what does that mean? What does learning loss mean? And then, second-largest pot will be for resources, and a little bit of a spoiler alert, resources is primarily, you think about technology for students, that would be a part of that. And you've got health and safety, which that would be pretty self-explanatory. You have indirect costs, which I'll come back to. Then, you have the amount that's reserved, or the amount that is not budgeted at this time. And so, I work backwards in this, in this pie chart. What is indirect cost? That's a very odd thing to list on a program. Well, if you run, if you run a business and you've got multiple business units, you may have a parent company that provides all the overhead from your different business units. And so, in a, in a business, you would apply an overhead cost to your business units that you have. School systems, as directed by the federal government, does the exact same thing. That indirect cost is the overhead cost that the federal government has said, "Okay, Johnston County Public Schools, you can apply 1.3 million dollars of your overhead costs can be applied to this program." And so, they call it indirect cost. And so, that's kind of an oversimplified explanation of what that is, but that's, that's where that money, or what that money is earmarked for. So, it's not a true expense, per se. That's, that pays for their, the portion of Ms. Milizato's time, of my time, of managing that, of that program, and the paper that's printed, the presentations that's done. And the, uh, all the paper that's printed, the presentations that's done, it, it covers the overhead for to support our program. So that money will actually flow into our current expense fund. So it actually is a transfer. We transfer that amount of money from federal programs into our current expense fund or fund, uh, fund eight. It's where, it's where to go to. So that is a bump to what we have locally that we will not have whenever ESER funds goes away. And that's one point three million dollars over the next three years is what will flow into local. So we'll get into what, what exactly does learning loss mean? Well, learning loss is exactly kind of what the name implies. It, it means that those funds are being earmarked to cover the, the, what Miss, uh, uh, what the curriculum department, um, shared earlier with declining test scores. That's the purpose of this largest pot of money, seventy-one million dollars. And at this time, that plan is to be broken down as follows. You've got thirty-four point five million dollars for summer school, uh, over the next four, over a four-year period. So it doesn't mean that we have to have summer school every year. And it doesn't mean that we have to have summer school in the exact same fashion that we did this year. It's just we have that pot of money, you know, allocated in our blueprint that we're presenting to you tonight for that purpose. And so that covers, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. So four full years of summer school and it includes the entire cost of that, that program. And then you've got fourteen point eight million dollars to support, uh, the Virtual Academy. And a question might be, well, why, why would we support the Virtual Academy with ESER funds? When don't we get state funds for the student, state and local funds for those students that are in the Virtual Academy? And you would be, and if you have that question in your mind, you would be absolutely correct. We do receive funds for that program or for those students for state and federal. The reason why we would want to put it in ESER funds to begin with is because that, these years that we have it funded with ESER, we don't, Dr. Bracy doesn't have to go back and pull teachers or pull resources away from our brick and mortar schools to support the virtual school. So how would that work? So let's say you've got a, a math class, a high school math class. And on average, maybe three or four students come from each high school around our district. Well, how does that, how do you, how do you plan for that teacher or where do you get that teacher from? When no school lost enough students to support pulling a teacher from a high school into the, into the virtual school to teach that class? Well, how do you do that is you pay for the teacher, it's the icing on the cake that Ms. Melzado mentioned. You pay for that teacher or that, that course using ESER funds and you don't have to touch the brick and mortar. So you kind of get to have your cake and eat it too. And eventually that will have to go away because ESER funds are going away. So over time, we will transition that from being ESER funded and slowly transition it over to being state and local funded. The Virtual Academy is, by the way, uh, the state is allowing us to, to fund it. And the state provides a principal for that, that program. It appears that it will be self-sufficient indefinitely unless the state changes the, the funding model for virtual schools. It appears at this time it, it, it will be sustainable. So by doing so, we don't have to cut into our teacher pool, we can allow it to be extra. You have thirteen point nine million, uh, for optional tutoring and extended, uh, extended day and Saturday academies. And that's going to be a, a really big thing that is going to be talked about in the near future. Got four million dollars for science and social studies curriculum.
Uh, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Why can't, you know, we've only paid a portion of our math curriculum, am I correct?
That, I believe that is correct.
Why can't we finish the balance of the math curriculum at ESER?
It depends on how it was bid. Because, um, we'd have to look at how it was bid and, uh, in some ca, and we do have state and, and local funds kind of set aside for, for curriculum. So this will just be extra above and beyond.
I was just, you know,
What we have the ability to.
I was just thinking that that would free that up.
Yeah, it's it, so when you do, just, we talked about all those hoops. If we didn't, if we didn't follow the procurement guidelines for federal funds when we sourced it. And so maybe we followed state guidelines, state guidelines are different than, than federal. So, yeah, so what we're doing now, and it's kind of an offshoot, now we've changed our purchasing, uh, process. So, and this has been a little bit of a pain for the schools, you know, just to be totally upfront. But the reason that we've changed that process is so that now we, what we are doing for our purchasing is following the most restrictive rule between local rules, state rules, and federal rules. So that everything that we buy complies with all three. So we just, we just made a chart and said, okay, what's the, what's the most restrictive way of having a contract? Okay, federal has the most restrictive rule for, for contracts. So that's the rule we're going to use for contracts. All right, what's the most restrictive rule for purchasing? Now, now we can freely move, and that was a lesson learned. You know, and that's, that's where we're going with this plan is to move away from reacting and, and, and try to get to planning. So that, that was a lesson learned from this past year. And then three hundred thousand for ACT prep. Uh, one point seven million for additional, uh, curriculum coaches and specialists. And there's more things that are, that are in, in there. So if you add up all these things and these are the largest, uh, but there's more that's part of that seventy-one point something million. And we do have a detailed budget that's attached to, uh, the abort agenda. And this will also be posted on our finance website tomorrow. So it's a line item budget and it goes through every single, every single purchase that we are planning. Resources, so we, we talked about earlier about what are, what are resources? Resources are primarily going to be our Chromebooks and student devices. So we have built into this plan a replacement schedule for our devices that cover the next, or cover a four-year period, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. This is one area that we need to pay particular attention to. Because when ESER funds goes away, we won't have a way to support this or, or to sustain it. So this is what we need to, to talk to the county about, that we're, if we're going to maintain this, this level of, of devices for students, we need to plan on about three million dollars a year, uh, for local funds that's going to be needed to support that. Otherwise, we basically flooded the system with devices that we won't be able to sustain in the long run. Now, we've got three years to, to plan for that and to account for it. But I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that this is one of the few things in the long run that we'll need to prepare for. We've got a half million dollars, uh, planned for preschool mobile units as part of our Title I expansion. So I do want to pause on this for one second. Uh, we, we will not act on this until we've got a, a well-developed plan that we bring to the board for discussion and approval.
I appreciate that because I have a little reservations about this.
Yes, ma'am.
And we talked about, you and I talked about that in the preschool meeting. So I appreciate the fact that you'll bring that back to us and let us talk about that.
Yeah, we're going to earmark the money for the time being, so it is reserved. We'll bring it back to the board with a plan. And then if the board so chooses to, to go with that, we, we can. If not, we can, we can back up and redirect. Then, uh, four hundred sixty-one thousand for three years of interpreters and administrator salaries and benefits. And of course, of course, we have additional two hundred fifty thousand for supplies. Uh, this, this is a little bit more of the icing on the cake. Uh, and of course, if you look at our detailed budget that's attached to the agenda, you'll see a whole lot of line items. And each one, each one of our line items is earmarked or flagged, whether it's resources or whether it's, uh, one of the categories that we've got mentioned here tonight. Health and safety, this one's probably the most self-explanatory of, of what we have. So it's cleaning supplies, it is additional, uh, excuse me, additional PPE for, uh, for students and staff. It's extra custodial services that we've talked about before. There's also an addition of, uh, two point four million dollars total for HVAC upgrades. So that improves air quality and filtration, uh, for some of our older schools that have outdated, uh, AC and filtration systems. Kind of what you see a picture of there on the screen. And one point three million set aside for student health services. Uh, so that would be additional nursing services and, um, emotional support, uh, for students. Uh, four hundred and seventy thousand, uh, for COVID response and contact tracing. And of course, just like all the other budgets, we have a line item detail on our, on our agenda. So that brings us to the actual plan, and this is what is being presented, uh, to the board tonight for approval. And with that, I'll turn it over to, back to Ms. Melzado.
And when you thought we were almost over, we're just starting, this is the plan. So we collaborated all the time in this plan. It's important to know the five parts of the plan, five components, the needs assessment. So we had to look at what were the needs based on COVID nineteen? Then we had to, part B, analyze how we would improve our system based on our needs. Now, part C is very important. This, the SR three is the one that has more emphasis in the addressing learning loss. At least twenty percent of the plan has to be towards addressing learning loss. Then other allowable uses like the air conditioning and the masks and all the other extra things that we could do. And we will talk a little bit about that. And then the last part is the assurance. So the assurance that we are not transferring the funds, that we are using the funds the right way, that we are documenting everything that we do and we are maintaining compliance. So the, the needs assessment part, the learning laws, I don't need to talk about it anymore because Ms. Stevenson talked about all the information. And then the other thing is according to research, children's mental health in the COVID has been impacted. So we need to make sure the kids are okay because they were impacted. Also, we have research showing that early education that, so the children's age three to five have also lost important learning opportunities over the last year. So another need, another need that we have, the contact tracing efforts. How do we know exactly who was in contact with whom? And that's why we are proposing some, uh, S two software and cloud cameras. Another need, the adequate devices and broadband connections. Some of our students stay when I'm on the bus and if they have the good connection, they can do their homework when they are doing, when they are going home. And some of our students may be in quarantine and be able to do their homework. So we want to make sure that they are with the most effective device and the best connection. Also, we have noticed a lot of vacancies and, and teachers and students in quarantine. So we have to look at that. So those, those things are big needs for our district right now. So Johnston County recognized the broad impact of the COVID pandemic. Our initiatives aim to address not only the academic recovery, but also the social and emotional well-being of our students. Adequate resources as well as healthy and safe environment. So in our plan, we are looking at data, we are analyzing the learning, we are looking at individual plans for our students as well as how to provide equitable access to effective learning and safe and healthy environment. And that's, those are the things that we will be doing to do that. Addressing learning loss through evidence-based interventions. We're going to be gathering information that we need to guide the decisions, including information beyond test scores such as student attendance, engagement, whether they are experiencing trauma or food or house insecurity. Provide high-quality, consistent curriculum, and the curriculum department talked about that. Also, technology device and reliable internet. We're going to provide the opportunity to participate in Virtual Academy, summer learning, standard learning, supplementary and intensive target interventions. And our schools had sent proposal, uh, proposals for, uh, tutoring and after school. Some of the schools work with before school, after school, Saturday academies, and during school day. So they are looking at all the opportunities to spend the, the learning. But we're also going to spend opportunities for families with pre-K students to have adequate education and provide social, emotional, and mental support for our students. Purchase educational technology, including hard, hardware, software, and connectivity. Improve our contact tracing with the S two software and cloud cameras to be able to determine the path of individuals that may come in contact with one another. Provide a safe and health, safe and healthy environment by monitoring our quality and working on school facility repairs to reduce the risk of transmission. So we are also implementing activities to maintain the operation and continuity of services, which includes hiring additional staff where necessary. And we also have to provide stakeholders with a clear explanation of just, uh, Johnston County reopening plan as well as opportunities to provide feedback. And through that, we have on the dashboard for COVID nineteen, we have our plan for reopening. And we understand that, uh, our stakeholders can come and make public comments and also they can use the hot, uh, the tip line to make suggestions. ESER funds, I'm, I don't need to repeat, uh, Mr. Britt went about all the use of ESER funds. The second column here is how much of that is, is going to be with SR three. So one example, the first one, uh, thirty-four point five for four years of summer school, nineteen point eight million dollars of that will be paid with SR three. And that's, the next few slides is about that.
So just in closing, I, I, I think everybody has heard, you know, the phrase before about the, it takes a village to raise a child. Well, I, I believe it's the same thing for, for to educate a child, it takes a village. And we have multiple, I, I need to get on my sales pitch or my, put on my sales hat here for a second. We, we have many, many roles here that are available for employees. And we've got, we have funds to, to utilize that. We, we need volunteers, we need tutors, we need bus drivers, we need teacher assistants, substitutes. So if you're listening to this and you want to know how you can help, there is a role that you can, that you can help your students, your child, your school uh, here at, at, at Johnston. And, and not to, uh, not to mention, uh, that teachers are going to need your support too. Because there's a whole lot that's been thrown at teachers, uh, with, with COVID. There's, there's a whole lot of, you know, we, we've got pay that's going to come with it, you know, for a lot of these extra responsibilities coming in. But that's still, it's going to be, it's a lot, it's a lot, it has been a lot and it, it will continue to be a lot. So your teachers are going to need your support. And, and, uh, because everything that we've talked about here today, everything that we've, we've done, this is just numbers on a page, this is words on a page. It means nothing without having people in place and, and staff in place. And so that's what we have for you tonight. Uh, if, if there are no questions, we respectfully request that you approve, uh, this plan as presented. Thank you for your time.
I got questions. All right, Virtual Academy, twenty-one, almost twenty-two million dollars. We, we're doing that, we'd, so go over that again with, with what that cost is and how are we going to continue it?
So with, with the, uh, cause as I remember, Virtual Academy is supposed to pay for itself. That's correct. And so to, uh, this will be like startup cost. So this was to pay for, I believe it was Ed Minim, is that, is that right? Ed, Ed Minim, uh, for the platform, uh, for, to provide, uh, a platform for students to engage with. It's to, to basically, it's the startup cost for the program. And it allows us to not have to pull away from brick and mortar to start a virtual school. And so that, that's the maximum possible cost that we could foresee that the virtual school could, could have over the next, uh, three years. So realistically, this is probably the one thing that we will, that, um, that we'll have money left over anyway, that we can reallocate elsewhere. Because the goal is to over time, transition it to state and federal. And it, and it is, uh, self-sufficient.
A, after the three years, it's self-sufficient?
Probably sooner.
What would we have done if we didn't have ESER funds to do virtual?
What you would have had to have done would have been to pull teachers and pull resources away from, from brick and mortar.
Like state-funded positions for these?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. And Mr. Carroll, just, um, you said you thought it would pay for itself. I think you're referring to the fact that the enrollment would increase, the ADM would increase, which would give us more money, per pupil money. I think Mr. Britt, are we, yesterday, what were we, thirty-seven thousand nine hundred forty-one, um, pre-K twelve?
Pre-K twelve.
And thirty-seven thousand four hundred something K twelve?
So we're, we're nearly a thousand students higher than what DPI projected our enrollment would be this year. Over a thousand students higher than what we were last year.
So we've exceeded our target already. I will, I will get the information for the board, but many of those students that are at the Virtual Academy were homeschooled and charter schooled last year.
How, how, how many students are enrolled?
Fourteen. 14 something, I can look it up and it's 1400, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And correct me if I'm wrong, there would be more, but Ed minim can't provide the staffing to accommodate more that have signed up because there was a waitlist.
More are interested in going there if, if we're possible, yes.
All right, one other question.
Yes, sir.
We've only allocated 12 point for facility improvements out of all this. Is, is that, is that it?
That we could pull, so this is kind of the blueprint. And what we'll do is we'll adapt that blueprint as we go. So we focused this time on learning loss and, and that piece of it. And once we got through with the Saturday Academy, with summer school, with, you know, tutoring, once we got through with those big pieces, that soaked up a lot of the, a lot of the, the budget. But what's, what's going to happen is a lot of these things that we've budgeted for, you know, we, we've kind of planned for the high end. You know, there's a realm, there's a range of possibilities that, because we're talking about a three-year, we're talking about a three-year plan. So what, what could happen over the next three years? So this budget will, will definitely change over time.
There are.
Uses of S R one, two, three, four, five, whatever it is, that we can do for building improvement, maintenance improvement. You know, what can we truly anticipate and plan that we can spend on that?
And I've been pretty clear about this. I think we have an obligation to the taxpayers of this county to, to do, to, to put some of this money in solving some of our maintenance needs as approved by S R, whether it be heating, air conditioning, air filtration, or, you know, stopping some mold and mildew issues. And I ain't sure 12 million not going to do it.
Yep, Brooks Moore's got a very detailed list.
That's what I was going to say. And Stephen, I know you're not Brooks, but in most of that, well, you do know this, you and Ms. Mills, I don't know that. In most of that narrowly focused on air quality.
That's correct.
It, it's sort of like what we did at West Clayton. Remember when we shifted that funding? Are we still able to do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I think that's what Mr. Carroll's talking about as well is the opportunities where we saw things that needed to be done. Now, S R money can be used of that, which frees up other money.
That's right.
So the way I interpret the presentation that kind of addresses his questions is you have a certain number of, you got about 60 some million dollars that's due spent by 2024, correct? Is that, I, I can't remember the exact slide, but it appears you got 65, 66 million dollars that is.
We've got about 30 million that's due by, well, there's a little bit less than that. There's about eight-ish million due by, and I'm, I'm messing up these numbers a little bit, but it's, I'm getting you in a. I'm, I'm. About eight, so I got, I got a phone, I got a phoner friend here that's going to help me too.
But I noticed that at 2024, that was the expiration for a large chunk of that money. So we do have a little bit of time. And it appears that you've been focused, laser focused on the curriculum and the delivery of instruction. And that that money will be converted at some point to something that facilities needs. Am I correcting that assumption and interpretation?
You're exactly right. More, more than likely, we will not need the amount of money that's set aside for the virtual school. And more than likely, we won't need the amount of money that's set aside for summer school. So those, those were, were budgeted high because we, we don't really know what those, you know, we're, we're looking forward for, you know, three years at a time. And so it's really.
Summer school this past year, was it 12 million?
We, we ended up, I forget exactly what it was. I don't think it was quite.
I think what the finance committee is wanting some kind of soft number if you ever come back into that. Just to ask, a guesstimate. I don't, we don't need it tonight, but.
It was somewhere around 10, 10 to 11 million dollars.
So.
We ended up split funding a lot of the.
No, what I'm talking about is where he overestimated some, some item. I want a soft number of what that would be.
All right, may I ask this question? I'm sorry, what Ronald was talking about, do we have to have the money spent or encumbered?
You have till September 30th of 2024 to have it encumbered. And usually there's a liquidation period after that. Usually unless this is different in some way, it'll be December of 2024. You really don't want to push it that late, especially with this pot of money because there's no opportunity for corrections or, or course adjustments at that point. You really want to have it. My, my goal is September 29th, there's, there's of 2024, there's no, every check has been written, every payroll has been processed.
Forgiving a joke of, of course we could spend it. If I remember correctly, I think it looks like we spent 18 million dollars or something. Yeah, 18 million and 104 million is what we've been entrusted with or allocated or however you want to say it.
Yes, sir.
And obviously we could spend it, but is there a responsible man? I mean, can we responsibly spend all this money? I mean, you're talking, yeah, okay. But I mean, you're talking 80 million dollars and to this point, it's 2021. We started receiving this money in 2020. So 25% of the way in, we've got three years left. We've spent 18 million, there's 80 million. If you go on like a statistical basis of what we've spent versus a forecasting of what we could spend, you're looking at 80 million with 20 million left over.
Exactly.
So yeah, I appreciate, but is there, is, I mean, I, I know we can spend it. But is, do we have those needs and provide, I mean, are we going to be able to spend all of that in a responsible manner is my question.
Absolutely. To, to, to piggyback on Mr. Carroll's point, they just made a spit ago. I believe Brooks Moore, if my memory serves me correctly, presented a wish list of about 42 million dollars of facility needs.
And a lot of that was just air quality type stuff.
That's right. Yeah, so there, the need, yeah, our phone, yeah.
If we don't plan for that, and, and I'm all for doing, you know, when you say 104 million dollars and you say, well, you know, well, I can spend 80 million dollars on learning loss. You think, well, that's going to make up a lot of loss. That leaves us around 30 million to deal with. That's just an arbitrary figure that in my mind comes to. You know, if we're going to deal with the issues in the county and at the end of S R, one, we want to see a great deal of learning recovered that we have, have done. But we're also going to want to see some other issues solved.
Sure.
That is going to reduce the burden on us in terms of our facilities, especially when it says you can use it for that.
Sure can.
I think it's responsible of us to do.
And to piggyback off what he's saying, do you have a timeline? I know you said Brooks has 42 million dollars worth of perceived needs that we have in this county. How much? I had 3 million, we got 104. So whatever, yeah. But do we have a timeline where we will be able to present, okay, all of these S R funds? And I get it, there's a moving target with, you know, we got till 2024. We don't know what's going to rear its ugly head in the next six, 12 months. But do we have a timeline where you'd be able to present almost every dollar? I know that that's impossible almost, but we could allocate, forecast and project. Do you have a timeline where you'll be able to bring that and say, okay, this is where it's at?
The way it's been going since COVID hit has been adapt daily. You know, we're, we're finally trying to kind of get in front of it. You know, everything that we've done in the past has been reactionary. You know, it's, oh, gosh, we need, we need custodians and we need a custodial service. Let's, let's react to that and get that in place. And so we're, we're, we're just now kind of transitioning out of the reactionary into, into the planning phase.
I just totally get what he's saying. I mean, if we don't spend it and then, you know, 2025, we're going into local funds for some air quality improvement, that's shame on us, you know?
Absolutely, understood.
So what we obviously need to do is just have further conversations with the board of that, of X number of dollars left. How much do we want to devote toward air quality improvements?
Continue to have Brooks to share that with us, the needs that they have or what they, what we can use this for.
We were very, I'm very sensitive. The leadership team is very sensitive about our air quality needs. Make no mistake about that. We talk about it all the time. Brooks is always bringing it forth and putting it on the table and keeping it in the forefront. But we are very sensitive about our academic needs and where we are. And we just don't want to lose sight of the learning loss that we've had and the goal and desire of everybody in this room and in this community about where we want to get to academically, about 23, 24, about 100% of our schools being A, B or C. Can we accomplish both? I believe so. I believe we can get there and work on our facility needs. I don't know about 45 million dollars worth of them, but we can work on a lot of them.
I, I don't want to give them 45 either, but.
He wants 45.
You know, what I'm saying, you know, at the end of the day, I, you know, I'm going to be responsible for what we've done with 104 million dollars.
Absolutely.
And I want to be able to say to the people, well, you know, I want to be able to say, look at where our students are today versus where they were. But we also have to say to them, look at these facilities that we were able to improve that is going to lessen your burden or maybe not lessen your burden of bonds, but look how much further down the road we are in solving our problems than we would have been without S R funds.
So what we, what we, that's a great point, Mr. Carroll. So what we can do, Mr. Moore, Mr. Britt and myself is to develop a plan and an outlook and come back to a facilities committee, I'm sorry, with the finance committee and talk about what percent of that or what amount of dollars do we want to spend on those air quality needs? Yes, sir. I don't think.
Yes, sir. I want to, I want to.
The decisions in regards to students first.
And, and that's why we have Ms. Andrews nights like tonight when Ms. Millsato, Mr. Britt share what we're going to do with these S R funds. So you all can say, yes, this is what we want to do. And we can come back and amend these plans.
Absolutely. And it'll, it'll be a constantly evolving process.
Keep that in mind, it's, it's a living document.
Just like tonight where, where we talked about, you know, needing extra funds for teachers to, to teach, teach extra classes. You know, that, that was, that was a change to the plan that we're going to submit, you know, this month. And so it, it is a living document. Unlike a blueprint that you, that you buy from an architect and if you make a change, you got to pay a bunch of money for. We can, we can adjust this blueprint on the fly.
So can I, can I say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
We have 1,479 students in the Virtual Academy today. 14, 1479, yes, sir.
And our enrollment for the record is 37,941? That's phenomenal.
What it was yesterday.
That's phenomenal.
Mr. Britt, Ms. Millsato, thank you very much. I love the analogies at the county commissioners meeting. We had the bricks and the mortar.
I like icing.
Tonight, we had the pound cake and the icing. Yeah, yeah. So really appreciate the details and the time and effort you guys put into this. As always, we, we want to make sure that we get the most bang for our buck. And I think that you guys want that as well. So we really appreciate all of the information you provided us tonight. So I know this is an action item, so I will entertain a motion to.
The move.
Motion by Mr. Wooton, second by Mr. Bird. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Dr. Pierce.
Good evening Chairman Sutton, members of the board, Dr. Bracy, Mr. Sue. This afternoon, I, or this evening or night, wherever we're at now, I will share with you some JCPS COVID updates based on information that's been provided to me by the Johnston County Health Department and North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, as well as I will be sharing briefly on Senate Bill 654, which was recently voted on. So I won't take a lot of time. Those are the four areas that, that we will be talking about. And then we'll have time for some questions. Here's information shared by the Health Department. It's the same information that has been shared with the county commissioners each month. And Dr. Pearson is also willing to share this information with you all each month as well. We'll not talk through this as Dr. McCaskill covered a lot of this information earlier with you all tonight. She did want to share, Dr. Pearson, total cases based on age groups. So school age four through 17, the case count from June till September. As you can see, the numbers, 48, 256, 817 and 527 as of now in, in September. The hospitalizations of students, or excuse me, people, children ages four to 17, and then the breakthrough cases, which would be someone who potentially already has both vaccinations and 14 days after that is what they define a, a breakthrough case. Here's information for vaccinations provided by North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services based on age groups as well. As you see, the population that we serve that can be vaccinated for students having one is 38% and fully vaccinated at 32%. Once again, the trends as Dr. McCaskill shared with you all, provided by the DHHS on total cases. So I just have a few words of, if there's any praise with COVID, I'm not going to say there, there is praise with COVID, but we get a lot of calls from across the state about our dashboard. People from all over want to know how we're able to share so much information and where it comes from. And I need to give a huge shout out to those in student services, Dr. Allen, Caitlin Fur and Public Information and the Health Department and all the principals. I need to say that again, all the principals, assistant principals on the ground that are helping us with this information. That's what makes this thing work and for us to be able to get the information. As of today, we had 818 students as a few minutes ago that had been quarantined and staff 54 and 205 positive between students and staff. And although those numbers sound high, I don't know if you remember where we were sitting back in March or April when we were in here. Those numbers are great, I hate to say it compared to then. And so it's, it's exciting to have the dashboard to share that information out there. So just a few things that I want to share with you all, what we're doing on this dashboard. We're currently monitoring trends. You know, we currently have people call us and say, what's going on at this school? I see there's a lot, you know, this going on here or there. So we're currently monitoring trends. What is it we can do? Is there something we can tweak that's causing this? We're looking at the data, talking to the Health Department. Is this, is this extracurricular base? What, what's going on? And so we're currently monitoring the trends, the close contacts and the contact tracing. But the biggest things is our focus areas right now that I need you all to know what we're working on. One is we're dealing with an enormous amount of positives and close contacts coming from off campus. I think your, our administrators would tell you that it's nothing for them to get calls and say, my child's been quarantined for something that's happened off campus. Or we get a call from the Health Department because of something that's happened off campus. And then the other area that we've got to work on is our lunch and spacing. That's the one time that face coverings are coming off a lot for more than 15 minutes. And we're trying to find more spacing, whether it's outdoors eating, getting picnic tables, things like that. So those are two areas that we really are trying to focus hard on. How do we overcome some of the obstacles that we're getting when it comes to the quarantine data? Those are two areas we know that are really spiking our data. Just a comparison, 111 out of 115 districts are currently requiring face coverings. And just want you to see our data compared to a district of comparable size where face coverings are optional. We have 16 staff, this is a Friday. We have 16 staff cases, they have 30 staff cases. We have 205 active student cases, they have 449. We have 50 active staff cases, they have 232. And we have 960 active student quarantines as of Friday. They had 7,153. And so I just wanted to share that data with you so you could see that. Senate Bill 654 talked about several things, including school performance grades. And basically just said they will not be calculated this year, as you've heard already. Talks about low performing schools, that the schools that there will no, not be any more low performing schools deemed that we will stay with the public school units of 2018, 19. And they will continue to be low performing schools as identified as low performing schools. It clarified remote instruction and virtual instruction. Johnston County Schools has a virtual school. So we're, we're fortunate in the fact that we have an actual school number. And past 2022, we can continue with virtual school because we have a school number. The other thing that it, that it goes into covering is it talks briefly about as a public school unit, we would apply for this, or we, we wouldn't have to apply for this, this applies to us. We can use up to five remote instructional days or 30 hours when schools are unable to open due to severe, severe weather conditions, energy shortages, power failures or other emergencies. And they use that time towards required instructional days and hours. And so that was put into the Senate bill as well. The other directive that was put in there was a local face covering policy that the policy community will take up, that we're getting samples from the School Board Association and the requirements that school boards to vote monthly on face coverings, as you're aware of. And then the last piece just to touch base on Senate Bill 654, it temporarily waived certain requirements related to driver's eligibility for those who may have not made the grades or who no longer met the requirements to be driver eligible. And the provision expires on January 20th, 2022. So that's a, that's a brief down and dirty of the Senate bill. I'm going to quickly go into voluntary diagnostic testing and let you know what this is all about and don't want you to panic, all right? So our school system had a deadline of yesterday if we wanted to sign up and be accepted into the state's voluntary COVID testing program, okay? It does not, by no means we have to do it. It does not mean that we have to even access the funds or the ability to do it. But there's two options. And so we did get approved for it. Johnston County has been approved for funds to do this. They're propose, we are proposing that if you were to want us to move forward with this, that we would only do it in a diagnostic measure with parent approval. And what I mean by that is. And what I mean by that is someone is sick, they can't find COVID testing anywhere, and they would like for someone at the school to do it, the parent could sign permission, be there with their child, and the child could be tested just like they would potentially at their doctor's office or somewhere else. Just trying to allow some access. We don't have to do anything, but there is another option where the county can partner or contract with an outside agency on the testing. Just some things in talking to Dr. Pearson, you know, this could really streamline the process for where I think we all want to go as we started trying to look at how do we move forward and out of COVID. This could potentially streamline the days of quarantine down the road if we can get results of diagnostic testing back. And so like I said on the last bullet here, we do not have to use the funds we applied for. We applied so we were prepared in the event that this is the direction the board would like to move. And so this is really not an action item, this is just for you to consider, and we can talk at a later date if we would like to move forward in thinking about using what we have been selected and said we could do as diagnostic testing. And I want to say it one more time, no requirements, and it would take parent permission, and they would actually have to request it to be done if they would like that to happen.
In, in talking with Dr. Pearson about this, was there, did she seem to have maybe any comfort in if, could we like partner with the health department to do the testing? If it was done through them and we had a negative test, did she seem to have any comfort with maybe reducing the days of quarantine?
So Dr. Pearson and I have spoke about that. I think as she, as many of you may have heard, currently right now with the community transmission, the community spread, she's not willing to probably have any of those conversations. But the state has a contracted group, and so the closer we get to, to meeting some of those case, lowering the case rates per 100,000 and the positivity rate, I think there's more and more flexibility, and this would only help in, in some of that decision making, yes.
She seemed, would you think she would have, you know, and I don't know about confidence in testing, I know, you know, that sometimes the way you do the test, you can affect results, the, the techniques, if you will, that if she knew she was, or her department was doing the testing and knew their techniques, that she may be more comfortable? And I know you can't speak for her, but.
I don't want to speak for her because I know right now they're, they're dealing with so many other things that they're even partnering with other groups to test. I'm not sure if the health department is even doing the testing themselves. So I think she would probably feel comfortable if we partner with one of these contract companies, for sure. And in talking with them, they're willing to make theirself very accessible, and I think that's what we're trying to do, is find a way so that people wouldn't have to wait two and three days to be tested.
And plus, if there's some confidence factors that might help us reduce the quarantine days.
Right.
At the health department level, and parents understood that, they may be even more willing to say, let's get tested.
Correct. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Pierce.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll go back to public comments. First on the list is Melissa Bowers. Jill Homan.
Did he fire her? Okay. Is this Melissa or Jill? Jill.
Jill, thank you.
Great. Board of Education members, my fellow guests, my name is Jill Homan, and I rise today to oppose the teaching of discrimination in our classroom and in teacher trainings. These insidious, these insidious ideas go by different names, critical race theory, the 1619 project, racial equity, to name a few, but they have a common goal. They are propaganda efforts to teach our children that the United States is an inherently racist or evil country. The examples right here in Johnson County are numerous. Recently, Johnson County public school teachers participated in the state math summit, which included a teacher training that describes math, yes, math, as racist. Another example, Johnson County Public Schools approved teacher training to quote, "reeducate white students so they have the right historical knowledge." In addition, the training bashes our founding fathers, equating their work with oppression. Johnson County Public Schools even approved a training that calls for librarians to diversify the book offerings to combat systemic racism and sexism. Goodbye Shakespeare, hello 1619 project. Meanwhile, the real civil rights crisis is staring right at us. Only 29% of African-American children are reading at grade level, and it's just 31% for Hispanic children across our region. For all kids, the number is less than half, 48%. It is heartbreaking and it is inexcusable that we are ignoring this crisis. Here's the good news, we can turn this around. We have gifted educators in our county. We must do everything in our power to equip our teachers with the best training in the basics of education, such as reading, writing, and arithmetic. We then need to let our teachers teach. We must reject this leftist propaganda that seeks to divide and indoctrinate our kids. I call on the school board to send an unequivocal message that we reject these discriminatory policies and we are recommitting ourselves to the basics in education. I ask for the board to use language passed recently in the anti-CRT bill passed by the General Assembly entitled, "Ensuring Dignity and Nondiscrimination in Schools." Its stated purpose is teachers, administrators, and other school employees recognize the equality and rights of all persons and prohibit public school units from promoting certain concepts that are contrary to that intent. Who could possibly disagree with that? Yes, we live in an imperfect nation, and certainly we must learn from the mistakes of our past. Indeed, our children should be educated on the historic facts, but our kids must also learn that they live in the greatest country on earth with remarkable founding documents like the Constitution. I call on the school board to remove the politics of the progressive left and to let our great teachers of Johnson County teach. Our kids deserve better.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Joe Preston.
Chairman Sutton, it's nice to meet you finally. How you doing? It's been a long night. First thing I want to say is to the media that's watching and to anybody that believes this way, that we are not an anti-mask movement. We are a pro personal liberty and choice movement. I think anti-mask presents the wrong message. That would be the same thing as me saying that I am pro-breathing and the other side is anti-breathing. But that's just not how it's reported. I'd also like to say that in North Carolina, there are roughly 11 million people. Currently, if you look at the CDC site, there are 3,690 people in a hospital due to COVID-19 right now, out of 11 million. If you do the math on that, that's .0003% of the entire state is in the hospital due to COVID. Continuing on with that, I'd like to talk about what I talked about at the commissioners meeting, the health department. The Johnson County Health Department is the sole reason that two of the members on this board said that they made their decision to vote for a mask mandate. That health department is unelected officials. You are elected officials, but you made your decision based off of an unelected position that is appointed by commissioners. Secondly, when I was at the commissioners meeting, Patrick Harris, one of the commissioners who's on the Department of Health for Johnson County, shared with us that basically they take whatever comes down from Raleigh. So in other words, the unelected officials of the health department in Wake County are making the decisions for our school board here in Johnson County. And that is obviously upsetting. I'm running for school board in 2022. I know that some of you are up, and I hope to take one of your seats. I'm going to say it point blank. Our group is peaceful. You saw our demonstration out there today. We are not here to cause any distrust with anybody or anything like that. We just believe that what you've decided is wrong, we got to take the masks off these kids. But it's not about masks. It's about liberty, freedom versus government control. And we believe that the government is controlling our decisions on what we do with our own person and our children. The Constitution protects us and our personal property. What is more personal than our own person? And to tell me I got to wear a mask, to tell me I got to put something in me, that's not right. Appreciate your time tonight. Appreciate what you guys do. I respect all of you. Sorry this has been so long. Sorry for what happened outside with all the deputies and everything that had to be here, but this had to be done. This is how America works. This is a republic. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Elon Lewis.
Hi. Okay. Okay. So for the past year and a half, schools, buildings, jobs, and day-to-day life has been shut down by COVID. When this started, the world stopped. Life stopped. No one knew how long it would stay or how big of an impact it would make, but simply it was a significant one. When schools shut down last year, it's one of the hardest things for kids physically, but also mentally. It kept us away from friends, family, and it also had and still does have us isolated. Although we don't want to belittle the people who did go through hard times through COVID, I would like to point out that it has turned into a political game. If we look at the statistics, there's an infection fatality of .05% in people 70 and under, which actually compares quite well to influenza, and it is 99.99% chance of survival under people 50 and under. Now, I know this talk is about masks, let's get into that as well. Masks are the big topic right now, especially since there are doctors on both sides who approve and reject them, which doesn't give us a clear answer to the public. According to scientists, according to scientists, not getting enough oxygen to the brain can trigger many side effects like anxiety, depression, and can even cause passing out and seizures in some cases. But something that I hope we can all agree upon is the importance of mental health within teenagers, since suicide is the second death among teens, according to the CDC. And according to pediatrics.org, suicide rates have risen higher in the people from 11 to 21 since the previous years prior to COVID. Something else I find interesting is that masks that most people wear are for the whole school day, like these. Those masks are only effective as long as they're dry, said Professor Yvonne Cozar of the Department of Infectious Disease at the University of Sydney. He also stated that as soon as they become saturated in moisture from your breath, they stop doing their job and pass on droplets. Wits gives the general public about 15 minutes per mask. According to the U.S. Surgeon General and the Center of Disease Control, they both stated that masks do not prevent the spread of coronavirus, along with the National Center of Biotechnology Information, Cambridge University Press, Oxford Clinical Infectious Disease, and the Influenza Journal. Now, I know the news networks and plenty of people have been pushing for masks, but the same people pushing for it are the people who go against their own beliefs. For example, Dr. Anthony Fauci has been seen without masks multiple times, even after pushing for it. No one here is saying that masks should not be allowed to wear or that they should be gotten rid of completely. However, we are saying that you give us the choice to wear one or not. We are all tired of having to abide by rules that not even scientists agree upon. So before I go, I'm going to appeal to emotion like the other side does all the time and say, think about the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Teresa Pierce.
I'm Teresa Pierce. My husband and I are raising our nine-year-old granddaughter Emily, who is here in Johnson County. Emily has right-side microsia atresia, which basically means her outer ear and canal did not properly form properly, leaving her with impaired hearing. Because of this, wearing masks is impossible, and hearing people wearing masks like teachers is extremely difficult for her. I know you've already heard why masks don't work, so I'm going to focus on our personal experience as a result of your poor decisions. We watched Emily suffer through virtual classes last year. It was an awful, unorganized mess. We wanted to see what your decision, your decision would be regarding masks this year, and we were very disappointed in your delay, but thrilled with your decision of parental choice. Emily was so excited, she began, she was going back to school, that's all she could talk about. Then just days before school started, you flipped your decision, making masks required. We were devastated, and our entire plan was changed. We called her base school for three days, trying to speak to the principal, and couldn't even get a return phone call. My last attempt, I was told he was doing an interview with WRAL. If he had time for that, he certainly had time to return a phone call to a parent in three days. Now, that was myself and my husband calling him. I had reached my limit. I told the receptionist, if I didn't hear from him immediately, I would show up on campus without a mask to get his attention. I got a call in three minutes. Now, what does it say that a child's needs aren't enough for a phone call, but fear of an unmasked grandmother on campus gets action? The conversation with him didn't help. He offered no solution, but did agree that the ADA demands Emily's needs must be met. We scrambled to enroll her in virtual since your mask decision was after the deadline. She was placed on a waitlist. I called Ms. Elrod when she was there. No help. School started. I called and emailed numerous times to no avail. Fast forward, almost four weeks into the school year now, and Emily hasn't had a single minute of school yet this year, not a single minute. This is appalling. I consulted with an attorney last week, and we will be doing whatever is, it was necessary to remedy this. This entire school system is broken. Dr. Bracy, you failed us. Most of you have failed us. We pay taxes that support you and this system, and I demand my child be properly served. As I stated, I'm raising this precious child. I've been fighting for her for over nine years, and I won't stop now. I'm just getting started. In conclusion, I just want to say, we know. We know how some of you got elected and who you answer to. We know where your loyalties lie. We know how our money is being mismanaged.
Thank you, Mrs. Pierce.
My granddaughter.
Hi, my name is Emily, and I have a right-side microsia atresia. Because of that, I can't wear masks. But even if I get a mask exemption, it will be hard to hear the teacher for me and other students because the teacher is wearing a mask. It affects the way I can see my friends, and it affects me altogether. So please consider children like me when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Peter LaPreste. Did I pronounce that right?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your time tonight. While I was standing outside with the rally, listening to the board meeting, I noticed that there was a significant amount of time spent discussing options for quarantine, listening to opinions from different professionals, and my question for you is, why? Why are we spending that much time? So I'm a father of four boys here in Johnson County. I'm a pharmaceutical company data analyst. So with COVID, immediately I went to the data and the studies. So according to the CDC, there have been just over 650,000 deaths in the U.S. due to COVID. However, over 90% of those are reported by the CDC as being people over the age of 75 and with multiple and/or with multiple other primary causes. So what does that say about our Johnson County public schools? Well, the students, staff, and their immediate families have a .01% chance of dying from COVID. The risk of death was not even in the top 10 over the last year. Our students and staff had a greater risk of committing suicide, a greater risk of dying on their way to school or playing on the playground, and I don't believe that we had any of those deaths within our school. So our teachers and our staff had a 20x greater risk of dying from a heart issue, 18x greater risk of dying from cancer, and I could keep going down that list. And I know a lot of people say, well, there's severe effects. Well, according to the CDC data and other studies, there's actually not a greater risk of severe effects from COVID. I believe that all of you know that as well. You made your decisions based on the North Carolina Health Toolkit, and that whole document is 24 pages of propaganda saying this is how you force people to wear masks, to quarantine, and to get vaccinated. On page six, there's an actual statement of truth in there that says, students are known to not be at risk for COVID and to not be a risk to transmit the disease, right in the middle of that document. So the health department knows what the truth is, and I believe that all of you know that. So for those of you who have chosen not to follow the truth and to make a decision outside of that, I ask you to consider that, to think about that, to be convicted to do what's best for our children, our teachers, and our staff within our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dale. Next is Dale Lanz.
Superintendent Bracy, Chairman Sutton, Board members, thank you again for allowing me to speak to you. I'll start with a topic a lot of people haven't spoken a lot of lately, and that's the need for a policy against teaching divisive, nonhistoric theories, racism, and oppression. Some refer to it as CRT, but it simply out and out lies and has no place in our schools, and we will not stand for it. All of you have agreed at some point or another that you don't want this in our schools. So I implore you to take action on this subject sooner than later. Ron Johnson did his job and wrote a regulation that was reviewed by the Policy Committee and a Community Committee as well. This regulation was adopted. It's 5100R, as you know. We need more. We need a standalone policy that can be tied to this regulation that will satisfy the commissioners as well as the county that says that you're not going to teach these policies that gives Dr. Bracy the opportunity to protect us from it. Dr. Bracy has done his job. He related to me that he would enforce this regulation, and I appreciate the conversations that we've had. He's been forthcoming with me, and I do appreciate it. Again, I implore you to get this done. I'm sure all of you want the upcoming school bond to pass in 2022 election. Let me assure you, if we don't get this policy in place, that school bond is DOA when it shows up on that ballot. You can forget about it. We will work hard to stop that bond, so let's get it done and quit playing games. I'm going to mention a few things about personal freedoms. First of all, we have a constitution. It gives all of us rights. It's for the people, by the people. And that's the way things are done here in the USA, North Carolina, and Johnson County, including the Johnson County School Board. In case you weren't aware, there were hundreds of people outside earlier showing solidarity and the right to choice. When it comes to our personal freedoms, it includes our right to take or not take a vaccine that has got very mixed reviews at best. Do not think that mandating this will ever be okay in Johnson County. This also includes the overreach of forcing our kids to wear a mask in school. As you've heard from numerous people, these masks don't work. The data doesn't serve the purpose to keep these masks on these kids. Take the mask off the kids. We will not forget how you vote here, and even if your seat's not up for two more years. You may not be up till '24, but we will not forget, and we will be here. And we will be here to defend our kids and the rest of the county and our freedoms, our personal freedoms, God-given personal freedoms. Have the same courage, commitment your constituents had when we voted for you, and the same courage that Harney County and Union County had yesterday, just yesterday. Let it be choice. Thank you.
Next, we have Heather Rainville.
I do not even have school-aged children. I have a three-year-old and I have an almost-two-year-old, so my situation's a little different, but thank you guys for, I know y'all are tired. All of us are tired. I appreciate that you're hearing us and hearing what we have to say. My husband is a Johnson County Public School teacher. He has followed the rules. He wears the mask. He's gotten the vaccine. You know, he's doing everything he's supposed to do just for the sake of trying to give the children an opportunity for an education. But just there's some things for me that just don't make sense. So if I get COVID, because my husband's vaccinated, I can share a bed with him, and he can go to school. He doesn't have to have a COVID test. His principal tells him, "Oh, you can still show up." To me, that's crazy. He's got 300 students, because he teaches an extracurricular. He has 300 students that he's face-to-face contact with. And so if we're focused on consistencies like safety of our children with masks and vaccines and all of these other things that we're putting on the table, then we have to have something that's consistent in protecting them that actually makes sense. So you can't say, "Y'all need to wear a mask all day, and then it's okay, though, because you're vaccinated," even though we know vaccines can still cause transmission. That has been stated by the doctor earlier this evening. It makes no sense. Everything that is happening right now is about controlling our kids and teaching them from a young age to not question authority and do what they're told. It's teaching our children that they are not an individual and that they can hide behind these faces. I wish I could see y'alls. I have no idea what a lot of you guys look like. And I know that in your heart, you have to know that that's not natural, and it's not how we were meant to be. Imagine being a young child. There's a face. We can do that when we eat and drink. Imagine being a young child and going to school for the first time, and you can't see your friend's smile, and you don't even know who your classmates are the whole year. You might see a glimpse of a face for a, quote, "mask break," which also, I found out, have been used as means of punishment when people are acting up in classrooms. I don't know what the solution is, other than parents have a right to choose. It's the parent's job to take care of our children and focus on their safety, not y'all's. Y'all's job is to make sure they get a quality education. Your job is to make sure our tax dollars are covering those things. Our job is to decide if we think we need to put a mask on our child, if we should get our child vaccinated when that time comes, if we should get vaccinated. Kids don't transmit it like adults do. Kids aren't dying from it. And all we're asking for is for your consideration to protect and make reasonable, scientifically accurate decisions that are consistent. I say "parent's choice." It makes the most sense. But either way, do something that, that just, across the board, it's working, not stuff that's just blindly guessing and just playing these games that don't make any sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Julie Daniels.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. I'm here tonight for my grandchildren, their parents, and every child in Johnson County Public Schools. And I cannot stand idly by while our children are suffering. They are suffering, believe me, literally. In the last two weeks alone, my granddaughter's fifth-grade class of 13 has had four children that have had to leave early because of severe headaches and nausea from wearing masks all day. But I'm here to tell you tonight a story about a five-year-old little boy. He just turned five in August, and he was so excited about school that he, when they would drop his sister off last year, he would tell his mom, "I need to go to my school." He wanted to get out. He's excited. That little boy had a bone infection when he was 15 months old. He was in the hospital for days. And of course, they drew blood. They injected needles quite frequently. And it got to the point that he became numb. He didn't respond. He shut down. And he did not speak again until he was almost three years old. He went to 18 months of speech therapy. He's back now. First things he started saying, hexagon, pentagram, parallelogram. He knows all the planetary alignments. He can tell you characteristics of those planets. He just recently used the word octillion. I actually had to look it up. But anyway, he was so excited about going to school, but he had never worn a mask. And his mother, at the beginning of August, decided she needed practice with him. And when she asked him about putting the mask on, his first response was, "Why?" And she said, "You might have to wear it to go to school." He said, "But I don't want to." And she said, "Well, honey, you might have to." And then, when he put it on, he acquiesced, put it on, and his next response was, "But you can't hear me talk." She said, "Honey, I hear you." And then he said, "But you can't see my mouth." And the fear is, this little boy is not going to be able to accomplish what he would, because he's not going to be able to, every day, not touch that mask or pull it down. And he's going to have bad days, and he's going to be told that that's not good. And then he's going to hate going to school, and he's not going to excel the way he could, and will never know what he could be, because he's hidden behind a mask. I will tell you, these masks do not work. If you look up Dr. Scott Atlas, he has been a health advisor to numerous countries. He's actually on the medical board for the Nobel Prize, and he has stated they do not work. There is no statistical evidence. The masks do not work. I beg you to protect our children.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Michelle Thomas.
I've been a parent for 29 years, have put two daughters through Johnson County Schools. My youngest daughter is currently a junior at a private school since the optional mask was flipped. She attended Clayton High School for the last two years, and we loved it there. In all the years we've had kids in your schools, we never felt the need to go to a school board meeting. Main reason that is, is because we trusted you, believed you were looking out for our kids. Unfortunately, that opinion has shifted greatly with all the recent mask mandates and ridiculous quarantine rules, just to name a few. So here we are, divided, frustrated, tired, worried, and fighting for what we feel is right. As you have seen, you now have an army of parents that are fighting for the God-given freedoms of not only their children, but as parents. As parents, it's our job to care for our kids, to ensure they have an education, healthcare, food, shelter, and love. As parents, it's our job to protect our kids and to be their voice when it's silenced. This is why we're here today. We are their voice. We are speaking loud for all of you to hear us. We are standing in, if you were standing in my place today, I wonder what you would feel as a parent, knowing you had to be forced to take a stand just to have the right for your kids to attend school freely, without restrictions with masks or fear of being shut down daily, or worried what you would do if schools went back virtual, or even worse, if they mandate a vaccine that hasn't been thoroughly tested or proven. I would like to think if you were in my place, you too would stand up for your kids, yourself and the community you call home. Our kids are truly the losers in all of this. They've had no choice. But you, all of you, have a choice. And I, along with many other parents, are asking you to think about what is truly best for our kids and not to give into the special interest of third parties that influence your decision-making. I know my daughter isn't attending your public school this year, but as a local business owner, taxpayer, I'm helping to fund schools, your salaries, teachers, to name a few. Therefore, I have a vested interest in what happens in our school system. I believe this is how the majority of us parents feel. Despite how awful this year has been, it has been a learning experience. It's truly opened our eyes to the incredible corruption throughout our government that has spilled into our local governments as well. It's ignited a movement among everyday people that's only grown stronger. We are watching you closely. We are taking elections more seriously, showing up to vote, run for office, do our own research, and not just trust what is being told for us. We will attend and speak out at meetings, be active in our kids' school, and more supportive to our hard-working teachers. We will no longer be on the sidelines, allowing the powers that be to dictate what they feel is best for our kids. We are taking back our control. As a parent, I will continue to teach my kids love and respect. Everyone deserves to be loved and accepted, no matter their skin color, religion, or identity. This should be taught at home, not in the classroom. I will continue to do everything in my power to ensure they are protected and fought for. That's my job. I'm their parent. You're not. We're not going to go away. We're not going to and we're never going to give up the fight to protect our God-given rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Jillian Malham. Addison Edwards. Jessica Ann.
Hi, I'm Jessica Ann Becker, and I would like to read you an email that I wrote about a month ago. First, I'd like to say that I believe your decisions are being made with the best of intentions, but I feel like all of you know deep down that they are not 100% necessary. I was recently reminded of a social experiment that I learned about in nursing school that I wanted to bring to your attention. In Milgram's study, there are three participants. The experimenter, who is the person running the study, the teacher, who is the volunteer and subject of the study, and a learner, who is an actor and participant in the study. In the study, the teacher is instructed by the experimenter to provide a shock to the learner each time a series of words are not remembered correctly, as a punishment, to determine how punishment impacts their memory. As the teacher administers the shock, he hears the learner cry out in pain, and in some instances, even beg for the experiment to stop. Each time the teacher hears the cries, he looks to the experimenter for reassurance. He is told, "Please continue. Please go on. The experiment requires that you continue. It is absolutely essential that you continue. You have no other choice. You must go on." The experimenter also has prods to use if the teacher makes specific comments. If the teacher asks whether the learner might suffer permanent physical harm, the examiner, experimenter replied, "Although the shocks may be painful, there is no permanent tissue damage, so please go on." If the teacher says that the learner clearly wants to stop the experiment, the experimenter replies, "Whether the learner likes it or not, you must go on until he has learned all the words correctly, so please go on." In these cases, the teachers continue, because they are repeatedly told that they are doing what is right, despite knowing within themselves that they are causing pain to the learner. I'm referencing this study, because I know you're upholding these mandates, because you are being told it is what is right, and it is what is required to keep our children and neighbors safe. But at what price? Increased anxiety, headaches, fear of themselves, decreased learning, appreciation for school, lower immunities, so many more that we currently know of, and God only knows the long-term effects that we do not. Are you hearing our cries, the cries of our children? The decision-making power has been handed down to you, because large entities like CDC or the NCDHHS cannot possibly provide a one-size-fits-all for a large population of people, when there are so many variables in play. Correct me if I'm wrong, but do you not have some power to create and alter regulations for masking and for quarantining? What about a restaurant-style masking, where the children can be mask-free if they choose, within their classroom and required in the hallways? Since they are constantly exposed to each other throughout the day without masks anyway, I think this might be a reasonable alternative. How about increased purification of air within the school as a measure against COVID? There are a plethora of alternative quarantine guidelines available as well. It is my understanding that you do not have to follow those that are being provided to you. Also, at the very least, can we determine an exit strategy for these masks? When will it end? COVID is here to stay. Whether we like it or not, there will always be a new variant. That is the nature of all known respiratory viruses. We need to do better.
Thank you. Thank you. Lisa Hoy. Okay, thank you. Tiffany Wallace. Not here. You're Tiffany? Okay, that's fine.
Good evening, Board. My name is Gracie Wallace. I am a ninth grader at South Johnson High School. I want to tell you some things really quick, just plain and simple and to the point. Mask. There are studies that show masks do not work. If you wear a mask, you need to change it every 20 minutes, because the bacteria inside the mask from our mouths get all over it and masks, and makes it grossed. Also, studies have shown that you are not getting enough oxygen when you wear a mask. Please make it optional. I want to remind you that children have a hard enough time in school trying to fit in and feel welcomed. So I have a question for you. Remember the last time you were having a bad day, and you went out and about, and you saw someone, and they smiled at you, and you smiled back, and that smile changed the way you went on for the rest of that day? Have you ever had a time like that? That is a psychological issue with masks. If you can't see a smile, then how are you going to be able to cheer someone up? I miss my friend's smile. I miss seeing everyone's smile. I am in the inclusion club at South Johnson. It's something I have a passion for. I love spending time with them and showing them that just because they are different doesn't mean no one wants to hang out with them. The kids in Inclusion Club are the kids with disabilities. Don't you think they need to see some of their peers' smiles? But instead, they can't see our smile. My sister Olivia Wallace attends a middle school in this county. She told me her teacher threatens the kids in her class. The teacher says that if they do not wear their mask appropriately, then they will not get a mask break. The teacher should have came up with a different thing to say and not to punish a child for not appropriately wearing a mask. That is sick and disgusting. I know some teachers have spoken and stated their students have not said anything to them about wearing a mask, but when teachers put so much fear in us about punishing us with ISS and suspension, then why would they want to speak up and tell them? We want to see smiles in our schools. Please make it a parent's choice, so we can have more happiness. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. Next is Brittany Pony.
Good evening. My name is Ayda Caizeo. And it is an honor to be here today, terrible circumstances, but I feel I owe it to this magnificent country and its people. You see, I am a citizen by choice. I chose to come to the United States, and I chose to become a citizen. This is my home. This is a nation I feel honored to be part of. Today, I stand here among my fellow citizens, parents, and teachers, that we might not even have the same ideas. We may have different points of views, but we share and have something in common. We love our kids. We love our kids. We are worried, and we want what is best for them. When you were elected, you were elected to represent us. Your job is to look out for the well-being of the kids' education to the common good of our community, not to bring back the common evil. You're making decisions that goes against us, the taxpayers, the parents. We are not saying ban masks. It should always be optional as vaccination because my choice may not work for others, so we may respect that. We need to focus in our kids' education, and we're not, and it shows. The teacher's job is to educate, to teach math, science, biology, English, real history, not ideology. We need to teach them how to think, not what to think. What you're seeing is a replay of communism propaganda on our schools. CRT is pretty much teaching kids how to hate, to distance, and to dislike each other, bringing this ideology to our kids' mind, teaching kids they have it better because of the color of the skin, the minorities are oppressed. Dr. Burton Carson happens to be black. He comes from humble beginnings, where he is, or anything that he has done had nothing to do with his race or such. It's based on his mother's efforts, his own dedication, and his hard work. It is cruel to teach our kids that they are limited in their success because their ancestors were victim or because they are oppressed, because you belong to an ethnic minority. The privilege we have is to be American. Our privileges are not based on race or ethnicity. We create our own privilege. We work hard. We earn it. Martin Luther King said that he wanted his kids to grow up in a world where they are judged by the contents of the character, not their skin, their faith, or their roots. We stand together seeking the respect of our rights, our freedom. Today, we are sad, but we're not discouraged. We are upset, but we're not angry. We are outraged. It is truly disturbing what the people we elected to represent us are doing. This doesn't represent the amazing country, nor our history, nor the courage of the American people, our roots, or our dignity of the American people, our humanity, our ancestors. The fight against the tyranny sadly.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We got -- Ms. Pony. Ms. Pony, we got us. Next is Jacob McHatten here. Robin Centon. Regina Harmon. Okay. She's not wearing it.
Good evening. Regina Harmon, it feels wonderful in here, guys, nice and cool. I appreciate so much being able to speak. I know I'm the last person, and you guys are all ready to go home, just like we are. So I appreciate so much you giving me the, you know, the time to come in here. Well, first of all, some of you may be aware, some of you may not. I own the children's newspaper, The Total Connection, that was in your school system for 25 years. I did nothing but cover the positive things your kids did every single day in a majority of the elementary and the middle schools across Johnson County, and I was honored to do that. It was just an honor for me to do that. I enjoyed it very much, but I don't do it anymore. Why don't I do it anymore? Because of the rules that y'all have done, not allowing these kids to be kids, putting masks on them where I can't see their faces, I can't take their picture, I can't engage with the children in the schools anymore in order to do this that I did for y'all for 25 years. Now, you know, and my business has gone kaput because of that, but that was a choice on mine. I preferred to shut my business down after 25 years of servicing you guys instead of allowing this to go on and everything like that because of what you're doing to the children, and it is very disrespectful. Now, I'm going to change the tune a little bit here because I also own other businesses. And since this has started, I have not put a mask on. I have not worn a mask anywhere. I have not forced a mask on my employees. I have not forced a mask on my customers. They choose to wear it. They're welcome to, and I'm happy for them to do that, and I'm going to treat them with respect. Okay? But I was cited by my police. I won that case because this is a mandate, not a law, and y'all need to remember that. And everybody out there listening needs to remember that this is a mandate, not a law. You cannot enforce mandates. Now, I'm going to jump over a little bit and let you know that, oh, let's see, Governor Cooper sent the Labor Board after me, threatened me, did everything he could to me. I won that case because this is a mandate, not a law. I want to remind you of that, and I hope that what you'll do moving forward is please, please, give these families choice. That's all they're asking for, is choice. Choice to do what they want to do for their families because it's not up to all of y'all to decide to put a mask on their child and, you know, to mask them. You're not doctors. You're not going by the science. This is about choice and teaching the kids the right way, and right now, you're dictating to them. So really quick, people that are listening out there, if you want this to stop, and I hate to say this, and this is up to them to do, they need to hire a lawyer, and unfortunately, they're going to have to sue you guys individually to get this to stop if you do not do the right thing by giving choice.
Thank you, Ms. Harmon.
Thank you so much for your time, and thank you very much for --
Thank you. That concludes our meeting for tonight. As I mentioned earlier in the meeting, we will be, I will be calling a special session for Monday at 2:00 PM. It'll be virtual, and we will send that media notice out. And then our next board meeting is Tuesday, October 12th, 4:00 PM closed session, 5:00 PM open session. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Yes, yes, yes. I --
Pierce, you as well. Thank you so much.
Yes, please extend that to everyone in the law enforcement that came today, Smithfield PD, as well as all the Sheriff's Department. Thank y'all for your assistance. Dr. Pierce, thank you very much for all the hard work you put in to make sure that everybody was safe inside and outside.
-- very respectful. It went real well, and I think we should say thank you to the public for being respectful and following the rules.
Absolutely. Mr. Farrell as well. I know he was a big player in that as well. So thank you all very, very much.
Thank you all.
All right. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Carroll, second by Mr. Johnson. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Motion carries 6-0. We adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you.